Welcome, I am calling to order the meeting of Arlington's Select Board on Monday, March 20th, 2023, the first day of Astronomical Spring. I am Select Board Chair Leonard Diggins, and I will now confirm that all members in person anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in affirmative.
Diane Mahan.
Affirmative.
John Hurd.
It doesn't feel like spring. Yes.
It was fifty-something today. It's also Eric Elmuth.
Yes, and no complaints about the weather.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond in affirmative. Sandy Poehler.
Here.
Doug Heim.
Here.
Ashley Meyer.
Here.
Tonight's meeting of the Arlington's Select Board is being conducted in a hybrid format consistent with Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022, signed into law on July 17th, 2022, which further extends certain COVID-19 measures regarding remote participation until March 31st, 2023. Before we begin, please note the following: First, this meeting is being conducted via Zoom, it is being recorded, and is also being simultaneously broadcast on ACMI. Second, persons wishing to join the meeting by Zoom may find information on how to do so on the town's website. Persons participating by Zoom are reminded that you may be visible to others and that if you wish to participate, you are asked to provide your full name in the interest of developing a record of the meeting. Third, all participants are advised that people may be listening who do not provide comment, and those persons are not required to identify themselves. Both Zoom participants and persons watching on ACMI can follow the posted agenda materials also found on the town's website using the Nova's Agenda platform. And finally, each vote tonight will be taken by roll call. So, the next item is an update, discussion, and possible vote on the town manager search process. I turn to Mr. Heim.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll try to be brief. As the board and the public may recall, the screening committee for the town manager search forwarded four candidates for the final round of interviews, which are public. However, after forwarding those candidates, but before the board had an opportunity to conduct interviews, three candidates withdrew from the process, leaving us with only one candidate who wished to continue in the process, who is basically publicly identifiable. That candidate is Deputy Town Manager Jim Feeney. At this point, at that point in time, we wanted to make sure that there were no concerns regarding the open meeting law, because a preliminary screening committee is supposed to buy law for more than one finalist candidate to the next stage. Based on a review of the law, the work of the preliminary screening committee, which was fantastic, and discussions with the Division of Open Government, who were very generous with their time, I feel confident that the board can proceed with their finalists. Again, in brief, what the open meeting law required was for preliminary screening committee to forward more than one candidate to the next round, and they did, they recommended four. With respect to the withdraws, my understanding is there are many reasons why that might be the case, ranging from nerves about whether or not they would get the job, since most of the candidates are going to be executives in other municipalities, to understanding the strength of some internal candidates in some situation, to personal circumstances. We don't get to know why. But in any event, at this point in time, the board can proceed to schedule an interview with the finalists that wish to remain in the process, that can be publicly identified. And if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them, but the long and short of it is, if you want to make an appointment after an interview of Mr. Feeney, you may. If you decide that that's not the right candidate for you, at that point, this particular search process would be over, and you'd have to relaunch a search process and may decide a different way to go about finding additional candidates, if you felt that was what you needed to do after an interview of your candidate.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? Okay. Attorney, my colleagues? Mrs. Mahan.
Excuse me. Having been through this the most, I consider that, you should try not to do that. I think what we should do is, we've gone through the process, had the screening committee, had them do everything under the open meeting law, that's an extra step that this board takes. Legally, under the law, we could, as long as three or more of us agreed on a name, you know, Jane White or something, we could have just done that, but we, we have always endeavored and taken the extra step of the screening committee. So what I'd like to do now is hear from my colleagues of setting an interview, what we've done in the past, it's been done two different ways. Sometimes it was a separate night, we had the finalist interviews, then asked the finalist to leave, and then we've had our deliberations, and then, in the framework of calling a public session open meeting, and then voted for the town manager candidate that night. With the exception of Mr. Sullivan, it usually was something that was fairly, not, not a lot of time, but Mr. Sullivan, we were at two, two, and one for about forty minutes, and we had a discussion that went from there. So I guess what I would pose to my colleagues, and also recognizing, as we know, Mr. DeCoursey had previous engagement for tonight, we could either entertain perhaps doing the interview March 27th at 5:30 or 6:00, or do it the following Monday, if we want to stay on a Monday, or if we want to have a separate night, pick a Wednesday, which at the earliest it would have, I would say, just for everybody's sake and calendars, would have to be next week, also with the open meeting law. So I guess I'm wondering how you all feel about whether to do it and/or another day, another, but I'm kind of looking at, do we do it Monday, March 27th, which, like 5:30, 6:00, and then do enough time? I don't anticipate a long deliberation, because I don't see a two-two-one board with the one finalist, and then, in the frame of the open meeting, if we're at that point, and I'll say, do we want to do it on a Wednesday, which Wednesday, or something else?
Um, I'd say I'm happy moving forward with one candidate. I think we asked for a screening committee to send us three to five candidates, they sent us four, so I don't want to go back and say, all right, who's your next three, who at that time might also withdraw for the same reasons? So I think we'll go around and around. So I think we should set up a meeting with Jim, and I'm not, I mean, I think we can do it on a regularly scheduled meeting. I don't think we have another night in addition to the eight straight Mondays that we've been here. So, you know, I think that would be my preference, would be, sorry, thought that was on silent, would be to do it on the same night as a meeting. But, like you said, I, I don't, you know, hopefully, we can kind of push off some, some non-critical stuff that we have, and kind of centralize that on that night, and not flood the agenda up, and just focus on that, since that's important. I don't anticipate that this is going to be a long, protruded discussion, like some past searches, just because past have had multiple candidates to talk about. But my preference would be to do it on the same night as a meeting that we have scheduled.
Thank you. I thank you, Attorney Heim, for, for your legwork and your due diligence, that's really important. This is an extremely, probably the most important decision this board makes for the town. And I'm really pleased to hear that we, we have a finalist who was a top pick, you know, with, with a class of four, and went through a robust, rigorous screening committee, screening process with the committee. And that gives me confidence that Mr. Feeney is well worth talking to. And I think, you know, the task of the board is to conduct a rigorous interview, and then decide at that point, you know, if we're moving forward there, or taking another, and taking another route. So that's, and I'm, I'm very comfortable doing so. With respect to the timing, I guess a couple of thoughts. I think I, I'm aware that Mr. DeCoursey had a conflict tonight, and so, you know, I'm not sure how to resolve this, but, you know, I'd feel better with his participation in any kind of vote as to how to proceed, although, you know, I'd leave that to some of my colleagues, and particularly the chair, for your view on that, I don't, I don't have a strong feeling about it, but it's just something I'm aware of. And, and then also, I think it'd be good for the board to, you know, I am agreeing with a regular scheduled meeting, by the way, to take, to take some time to, to not, not, we don't need to make this a long process, we don't need to rush either, and I think setting up an interview format that is really effective and really help us answer that, that big question, is this the direction we want to go, I think would be worth taking a little bit of time to do that. I don't know how, not weeks, but, you know, days at least. So, and I, having received the news tonight, I don't know what the options are, because I've never done one of these, unlike Mrs. Mahan, who's, who's the veteran on this, so, so I'm happy to learn, I look forward to that, I can talk to some folks offline, I think we can access our consultant with, you know, for advice on that. And then finally, consideration of the candidate, too, I think, you know, allowing some, some time to prepare and, and be, and have awareness of what we have in mind would, would be good. So, yeah, that's, that's, that's a kind of a jumble of things. I think what that says to me probably is, we should do something next Monday, whether that's a formal vote to proceed, or whether that's, you know, discussing how we want to do an interview, possibly do an interview, I'm not quite sure how we incorporate Mr. DeCoursey's view of that, but that's kind of where I'm thinking.
Well, thank you. You know, so, Mr. DeCoursey's been my plus one in this process, because, you know, and so I did have a conversation with him, and, and so he is fine with us going ahead with the interview on, on Monday, and, and I also discussed with him the possibility of setting aside another day, Tuesday or Wednesday, as a fallback, so that we could do an interview, and if we feel that we need more time, then we would have that, they already set aside, so it would just be, you know, we block it out, have an item made for the town manager decision, you know, and, or discussion, decision, possible vote, and then if we don't need it, we don't need it, but if we need it, you know, then it's there, because of open meeting law, we will have to, if, even if it's on Wednesday, we'll have to, like, have that put out before, you know, our Monday meeting, you know, so, so there's that, you know, and I will, of course, talk to our consultant about the format of the interview. My sense is that, I mean, the candidates ready to go. So, and so I guess the question would be, do you want me some kind of communication about the format for the meeting, you know, and I would say, I mean, I could put out something to everyone one way, you know, and that would give you at least information about what to expect, you know, your role in it, you know, so, so it's really a matter of whether that's sufficient. Ms. Mahan.
And what's been done in the past, which does not have to happen all the time, is our Human Resources Director Karen Malloy has provided, in previous town manager searches, the board with, if not exact, sort of comparable questions of town manager candidates. And one of the bits of guidance she gave us, which we won't have to do in this process, was she really stressed, and I think also town council, if we had more than one candidate, it was always stressed, try to really ask, we're humans, so you can't ask the same question the exact same way, but try to stay in that format. So I would also ask the chair, if you could just inquire of Ms. Malloy, our Human Resources Director, if she could provide, if, if my colleagues are in agreement with what she's done in the past, and that does not mean we're all, we are all individuals, it does not mean we are bound to those, or we may read a question and say, you know what, that's not my question, but it triggered this, so that's the only thing for that.
Sure, and I, I was assuming that she would be brought into the process, because, you know, all along, Bernie and I have been working with Karen very closely, so, so does that sound okay? I mean, so now it's just a matter of what time we do it, you know, on, on Monday. So I, you know, I've been, I've been kind of anticipating, you know, that it would happen, you know, this meeting or, or next meeting, and, and chances are, it wasn't going to happen this meeting, because Steve is going to be away, you know, so I'm not anticipating much on the agenda, you know, next Monday, probably the review of the articles that we do today, you know, some art banners, you know, I guess a few things may pop up, but we don't have a lot of articles go through, so, I mean, we can start earlier, you know, and as early, as much earlier as people want, or we can start at the same time.
I mean, I'll go off what the board wants. I actually was going to ask if we really still needed a meeting on Mon, next Monday, if we're done with more article hearings, if there's anything pressing. I mean, I think this, the, I mean, we said, we have four months before the new town manager kicks in, but, I mean, if we are going to have the meeting and do the, the interviews, I think we can start at a normal time. That's, that's my, my.
My preference.
Yeah. You're fine, Sergeant?
For Monday.
For next Monday, yeah.
Yeah, 17, okay, all right. Okay, also, I'm fine with that, you know, so, yes.
I think one of the things is, I mean, I did think about this briefly, too, like that, you know, there's a, we're very fortunate to have Mr. Poehler services, and, and that's been an amazing bit of security and continuity in management. And I thought, well, you know, could we even wait until, you know, for a couple, three weeks, but we are, we may, we'll have some last minute things to do before town meeting, there might be a couple of late warrant articles we have to hear, and then reports of comments, and then we're into town meeting season, so.
Yeah, yeah.
So, yeah, I think that's, and I say that just for the public, so that they understand that, this is not, this isn't so much a rush, it's just good deliberate speed.
Yeah, yeah, because time is, time is entropy.
It is tighter, yeah, tighter than it looks, so that's right.
Yes, or any, any plan, I mean, time just generally is not friendly, any plan, you know, anything can come up, you know, so unless there's some compelling reason, wait, I'm generally like, so, all righty, so then the question is, do we need a vote on this? Are we, okay, all right.
I have a sense of a vote.
All right, so, moving on, consent agenda, minutes of meeting, February 27th, 2023, March, and March 6th, 2023. Mr. Helms?
I move approval with an amendment to the minutes of February 27th, just a correction that on the Ilwes Brook warrant article, I actually, I needed to recuse myself, and that's not reflected in the minutes, so just, that was a correction, I think Attorney Heim is going to make in the Select Board report, so I just ask that the official correction be made in the Select Board business minutes as well.
Second.
All right. So, on a motion by Mr. Helms with the corrections specified, and a second by Mrs. Mahan, Mr. Heim.
Mr. Hurd.
Yes.
Mr. Helms.
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Great. So, on item number four, licenses and permits for approval, wine and malt license and common virtual art license, Thai Moon, 315 Broadway.
Hi. Hi, thank you for asking me.
And your name?
I'm Hadi Galtam, I'm a Cusano.
Thanks, agreeing with us, me, and, so you want to tell us, and about your establishment, I, I realize that you used to be on Mass Ave, and now you're moving to, and so I'm glad you were able to stay in town, and sorry about me, the fire that led to the situation, so, thanks for staying, just tell us a little bit.
Yeah, so, about the legal license, or the, the moving to the other location?
About the move to the location, and, and maybe what's going to be different, you know, just, just a little introduction.
Sure, sure. So, Thai Moon actually got caught and fired around April 29th, 2021, I believe, it's been a long time.
Yeah.
So it's, it's almost two years at this point, and we, we still going through the insurance process with the payout, it hasn't been settled yet. So at this point, we will, we couldn't reach an agreement with the landlord at the old location, so we moved to the new location. Kylie, you know, Ali Carter, before she moved on, she actually gave me, I was really close to close down the business, because of the disagreement in the terms and the lease, and Ali said, well, look at the location, Turo just closed down yesterday, so I went down and checked out the space with my husband. And eventually, the town actually kind enough to give me some grants to put together the ventilation system, and a couple people, like customers, been, been sending us email or note, and thank you note, or sometimes put a sign on the window, you know, to let us know that, please come back to the business. So that's, that actually contributed to the decision to come back again.
Well, that's very nice to hear.
Yes.
I'm glad we actually have a few words, because, you know, I wasn't aware of the Ali Carter connection, but Ali's one of the first.
Yeah, Ali played a big part on this.
I mean, I'm not going to say more, because I'll probably say what my colleagues are going to say, so I'm going to turn to them and let Mr. Hurd.
Hello, happy to move approval, glad to see that you guys are opening back up. I know a lot of people are looking forward to this day, when you opened back up, it was certainly a tough loss for you guys and for the town when, when you had the fire. I know the Cusanos, both as business owners and as hockey and baseball.
Yeah.
Parents in town, Dante and Luca here, they're both excellent athletes. So I'm happy to move approval, look forward to coming in once you open again, and glad to see you guys opening back up.
Thank you.
Thank you, I very happily second that, I'm just thrilled that this worked out, that you're able to stay as a business member of the community, and that your family's here. And I remember when the fire happened, I, I don't know that I've seen such an uprising of public support and, and loss, that your wonderful food was, was not available, but, so it's just, it's just a win all around, and I look forward to enjoying it some more when you're back.
It was amazing to, to see, I mean, I was, it was so heartfelt message and email and those, I mean, I, it's been almost two years, and people still remember us, you know?
Absolutely.
That was a nice town to be in, we are so thankful for the support.
That means you're doing something right.
Thank you.
Great to see a success story, you know, how difficult it is in the restaurant business, my family's also in the same business, and it's very difficult, and one of the most difficult, well, I would say two of the most difficulties, first, creating a cuisine consistently that everybody likes, and then also, I wanted to say, it's not only the great food that you have, the second part is the environment and the people, starting with the owner on down, how they make the customer feel, not just coming in to do a purchase, but a part of the community. I know a lot of people were, you know, very sad to have lost not only your cuisine, but also your business, you at the helm, so that's really a great testament to you, and, and thank you for working with the town planning department. You certainly, I don't want to use any cliche things, but you definitely didn't just, you know, say, well, that's it, I gotta start over from scratch somewhere else. Sometimes it's even more difficult to stay in the community and, and try to replicate that. But thank you to your husband and your children for putting up with all of that, the things that had to be done, and dealing with the town, but sometimes it's a good thing, so.
It's a nice town, we, we live in Arlington, so we would not want to be anywhere else, so we can't run away. Wherever we go, hockey ring and things, people ask for it, so it's, it's definitely something that we want to contribute as a family to the town as well.
And everything in here is in order, and then the legal license, I know you're well versed with it, usually there's some questions from the board that really probes a little bit more, but you, you're already familiar with that, and, and what this board expects of you, and you've had a perfect record so far, so I look forward to your opening, and wish you more continued great success, and thank you to you, your children, and your, and your husband for choosing us and staying with us. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. And as always, I mean, the great part about going last is that my colleagues have said it all, they said it better than I would, so I'm just going to let that go, not going to add anything more, except to say that your son was like smiling so huge when John was talking about a, I mean, good hockey player, so, so it's great to see, you know, the, the kind of other connection here, you know, so, a motion for approval by Mr. Hurd, and a second by Mr. Helms, Mr. Heim.
Mr. Hurd.
Yes.
Mr. Helms.
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Thank you, look forward to the opening. Moving on, traffic rules in order, number five, discussion approval, fiscal year 2024 water sewer rates, Mr. Poehler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As is our usual practice, we come before the board tonight annually to request an adjustment to our water and sewer rates. This year, as opposed to the most recent past three years, the rate increase is much smaller, water rates will go up by 3.66%, and sewer rates will go up by 3.4%, so an average overall of 3.6%. That is mostly because, one, we have finished the debt transfer where the general fund tax dollars were helps, helping to subsidize water and sewer rates, we phased that out over three years, and going into FY '24, we will no longer be doing that. The second is that our usage compared to other communities in the MWRA has been relatively less, and so the overall increase is below the MWRA average. And this will allow us to go forward in the next year, have a balanced budget, and have sufficient funds to operate the water and sewer department, so I would respectfully ask the board's approval of these rates.
Mr. Hurd.
Happy to move approval of the rates as presented, and just say, it's nice this year, we got burned a little bit last year, because not everyone understood the debt shift, and even when you tried to explain it, some of us didn't really understand the debt shift, so it's nice to see reasonable rate increases this year.
Second.
All right, I can do the squibble thing when I'm in person here, you know, any questions, comments?
One quick question, just to take advantage of the person we have captured, I mean, sitting here in the audience, if I could, through the chair and the town manager, it's sort of germane to this, I'm just wondering, just because where it's come up with the water rates when they do change, where are we with the meter replacement program? And also, people have also asked me that, I've only heard of one circumstance, which I'll follow up offline, of a really, like, five-figure bill, new water meter goes in, and everything seems to go back to normal, but I'm just curious, and I understand that the water replacement program is separate from this, but since you're here, and it's over here.
Sure, thanks, Mike Radamacher, Director of Public Works, thanks for your time. I, the water meter project is a little bit behind schedule, mostly due to procurement of materials, we're having difficult time with the suppliers getting the needed water meters and the reading devices that we're installing on the outside of the home. We do, we have, between town forces and more recently with contracted help, we've probably installed about ninety percent of the town's water meters have been replaced, so we just have a, a small amount left comparatively, but we, again, we're having difficulty with the supplies, we were hoping to be done by August, but with current projections, that might be closer to the fall to be complete. And, and to answer your second question, we are finding often, when, in the past, when we send bills out, if a water meter isn't reporting correctly, or if it's stopped for some reason, we would put a note on a, a water bill that the read is estimated, or, or the, or if you have zero consumption, please call us, and we'll send someone out to the residents to, to fight, figure out what's going on. We don't always get that phone call, and so with this process, where we're heading into people's homes and replacing meters, we're finally getting an actual read of water used in a home, and so it results in a catch-up bill, where our records show you may have used ten cubic feet, and, but in actual, used a hundred cubic feet, and so we, we create a, a makeup bill to, to, to fill the gap. What we will also do, though, because that happens over a longer period of time than one, just one billing period, we can make an adjustment where we break up that usage over the period that it occurred, and we'll make an adjustment based on past rates, so we'll charge some of the usage to an older rate, some to the middle rate, and the last rate, so we'll try to break up that usage over the period of time where we believe the meter was not working, and, and spread the cost out in that manner, so that'll, that sometimes bring that, that large bill down. But it is, it is a result of finally seeing what actual usage is in some of these homes now that we're getting in and replacing the older meters.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Radamacher. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Radamacher, on the theme of why we have you. Could you remind me how many miles of water lines we have, because I know it's an astonishing number, and, and what our current situation is about, the state of them, and the, and the replacement repair schedule?
Sure, we have approximately 130 miles of water line, and our current maintenance funding, capital funding for that, we replaced about a mile a year. funding for that, we replaced about a mile a year, which we need to ramp that up a bit. Older water pipe is okay if it's built properly and it's in the right soil condition and whatnot, but we're finding some of our more maintenance prone or problematic pipe has been historically built in very rocky soil and whatnot and causes premature water main breaks and so forth. So we're not, we're getting a good use out of it, but not the extra life that some, you know, would hope. I think moving forward, we need to bump that up to maybe two miles a year. I think a 70-year-old pipe, if you did two miles a year and you had 130 miles, 70-year-old pipe is acceptable, 130-year-old pipe is not. So we do need to ramp up that program. We do spend, we do utilize grant funding and we're using some ARPA funding to help accelerate those programs, but we do have a bit of work ahead of us to get in a more advantageous place. Thank you.
Thank you. So I don't think this question is for you, it's probably for Mr. Poehler. Please forgive me for asking this, but it's not quite eight o'clock yet. But when I do the math, I don't get it, you know? So like the cost, your home use is 60, the example you give for 50 for the rates made. So let's say you're using 60 CCF in a year and then if you multiply that, let's say even by nine, you know, that just gives me like 540. But I'm seeing like 1,135 there.
I will defer to Mr. Radamacher. He did the math.
All right. 60 CCF, so I'd have to, I could sit back and do some math at my chair and get back to you. We've done a spreadsheet that calculates this out. Well, it's about 10, you also have to add the water in the sewer, right? So you might just be calculating on the water side, but it doubles it when you add the sewer.
Gotcha. Okay. Fine, fine. So I'm a renter. So it's like, that's all just kind of behind the curtains for me. So it's like, we just pay for it. All right, thank you. Sorry. I wouldn't have asked, that has not been before eight o'clock. And they were asking questions, they gave me time to like look at stuff, so, all right, thank you.
Almost done.
So I think that's it. We keep trying.
It's like one of those Facebook questions. I go in the garden, I have five tomatoes, three apples, like, oh no, I'm not even going to try.
Sorry. No problem. So with that, a motion by Mr. Hurd and second by Mrs. Mahan to approve the rates. Mr. Heim.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Hellman?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Higgins?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson, Mr. Paul?
Thank you. All right. Now to the real fun part of the meeting, the warrant article hearing. So first up is Article 10, Bylaw Amendment Vote Municipal Opt-In Specialized Stretch Energy Code. And with that, we have Ryan, I don't have your last name in front of me.
Katoski.
Katoski, thank you.
Good evening. And I think we have some slides to bring up.
Yeah, let me share the screen.
And while those are, while those are being brought up, I'm going to be very brief. I'm Ryan Katoski, I'm Chair of the Clean Energy Future Committee. And after I just give a few remarks, Talia Fox, who is the Sustainability Manager for the town, is going to go through some of the details. And we're going to also hear from Karen Keller, who is going to talk about the, some of the affordable housing aspects of what the warrant article has covered. I'm literally going to just cover the first slide. We have a net zero action plan in town to get to net zero greenhouse gas emissions by 2050. Some of you have probably heard me talk about this as being a journey. It's really a long process to get there. Warrant Article 10 is really the next step along that journey where we're asking the town, town meeting to adopt what's called the Specialized Stretch Energy Code. This code is going to help us by making sure that new construction is compatible with that 2050 goal. And buildings are, if you look at the different sectors of the economy that we need to decarbonize, buildings are a bit more challenging and this is a really important step in the process to making sure that we can ensure by that target date that we've got a decarbonized building sector. So with that, I'm going to give it over to Talia.
Thanks, Ryan. I'm Talia Fox, the Sustainability Manager for the town. So I'm going to provide some details on the history here and that journey that Ryan was talking about. Arlington was one of the first communities to adopt the stretch code in the state. That was a code developed in 2009 to provide enhanced efficiency over the base code. The town did this in part as a requirement for becoming a green community. The Green Communities Program, as you may know, is a state grant program that allows communities in the state to access competitive grant funds for energy efficiency activities. Since Arlington became a green community in 2010, we've been able to access nearly $2 million in funding through that program. So building on this local leadership, in 2018, the Select Board adopted a goal of achieving net zero greenhouse gas emissions by 2050. We've also demonstrated some leadership at the state level. In 2020, Town Meeting passed a Clean Heat Home Rule Petition and Bylaw Amendment to ban fossil fuels in new construction and major renovations. In the same year, the Select Board, or the next year, the Select Board endorsed Arlington's Net Zero Action Plan and Arlington filed its Home Rule Petition with the state legislature because the state actually preempted this kind of fossil fuel ban. In 2021, the state also passed an act creating a next generation roadmap for Massachusetts' climate policy, which is important because it mandated that the Department of Energy Resources, or DOER, develop a municipal opt-in specialized code, which is what we're talking about tonight. Arlington actually participated in the development of this code, including through 2022 Town Meeting's passage of Article 73, a resolution calling for a true net zero opt-in code or a specialized code, which with provisions more stringent actually than those provisions enshrined in the final code language. DOER finalized updates to the stretch code and the specialized code late in 2022. Also in 2022, the legislature passed an act driving clean energy and offshore wind, which among other things, created a fossil fuel-free demonstration project that will allow 10 municipalities that submitted clean heat home rule petitions to ban fossil fuels. So rather than approving those individual home rule petitions, this is a program that's going to allow those communities to ban fossil fuels. Arlington does intend to participate in this program and I will discuss shortly why that's relevant to the specialized code discussion tonight. And we're here in 2023 and we're talking about Article 10, which is for the specialized code. The stretch code has also taken effect as of January 1st and that's automatic for Arlington as a stretch code community. Next slide, please. So I want to discuss how Massachusetts' energy codes work. They build successively on one another, they're overlay codes. There are three codes. At the bottom of this pyramid is the updated base code, which is the International Energy Conservation Code plus some Massachusetts-specific amendments. On top of that is the stretch code, which is the base code plus stretch code amendments that are designed to make buildings even more efficient. And then on top of that is the opt-in specialized code, which is also known as the municipal opt-in code, also known as the specialized code. It's got lots of names, some call it the super stretch code, call it what you want. It is the stretch code plus specialized code appendices. Next slide. So some important things to note here are that, as I mentioned, Arlington is a stretch code community. 300 communities in Massachusetts are stretch code communities and all of the updates to the stretch code are automatic, so we don't have to do anything to be brought into those updates. The opt-in specialized code requires a town meeting vote. And I want to note that five other communities in the state have already opted in. Those communities are Watertown, Somerville, Cambridge, Brookline and Newton, and there are around 20 others that are planning to opt in this year. Next slide, please. So I want to mention here that Arlington does intend to opt, or to participate in that fossil fuel-free demonstration project, which is noted at the top of the pyramid here because DOER has indicated that adopting the specialized stretch code will help to facilitate participation in that pilot program. Next slide. So just to get into briefly what the specialized code actually does. I want to clearly state that the specialized code applies to new construction only. It does not apply to major renovations. That's taken care of by the underlying stretch code, which again is automatic for Arlington. Requirements for new homes under the specialized code are summarized here. First, homes over 4,000 condition square feet that use fossil fuels must be net zero energy. Net zero energy means that enough energy is produced by renewable energy, usually through onsite solar panels, to offset the total energy use of the building. Second, multifamily buildings over 12,000 condition square feet must be designed to meet the requirements of the highly efficient passive house standard. Passive house ensures superior building envelope and high-performing mechanical systems to reduce energy use and enhance occupant comfort and health. Passive house actually does not ban fossil fuels, just want to note that. Third, buildings that use fossil fuels must pre-wire for future electrification. That means that sufficient electrical capacity, circuits and plugs would be needed to accommodate future electric heating, ventilation and air conditioning, hot water service and appliances. And last, buildings that use fossil fuels must install a certain amount of solar, which varies by the type and size of the building, and there are exemptions for shaded sites and passive house buildings. You'll notice that most of the requirements here apply to buildings that use fossil fuels for any purpose. And so buildings that are all electric, for the most part, are actually not subject to any additional requirements under the specialized stretch code. My final slide demonstrates the timeline for the process. We've been doing public education over the last couple of months. We've made some presentations to local community groups. We've had several conversations with local architects and builders. Specifically, we held a forum for the development community on February 15th, which was very well-attended, and a public forum on March 1st. DOER recommends a phase-in period for the code, which would begin this summer in Arlington, should Town Meeting adopt the code. And we would be looking at a recommended effective date of January 1, 2024. And like with the stretch code, all future updates to the specialized stretch code would be automatic once we opt in. So that's going to conclude my presentation and I'm just going to turn it over briefly to Karen Keller to say a word.
Thank you. Good evening. Karen Keller, I'm a Town Meeting member from Precinct 5. I'm also the Chair of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And in my day job, I'm the Executive Director of Lisk Boston, which is a nonprofit community development financial institution and advocacy organization that supports the capacity of different parts of our community development ecosystem, including the affordable housing sector and the climate justice sector. So in that, both these capacities, I sort of want to talk just briefly about this code and how it aligns with our affordable housing objectives in Arlington. The Affordable Housing Trust Fund did adopt a set of guiding principles, which included aligning our affordable housing goals with our climate resiliency goals. And this code is one way that we can advance those principles. These requirements for multifamily affordable housing will not be a barrier to developing affordable housing. In fact, there's quite a bit of alignment with state policy and state regulators who award state subsidies have actually prioritized energy efficiency, electrification and resiliency in the projects that they give priority to in, under the state's qualified allocation plan. The passive house standard that's required for multifamily housing under the specialized stretch code is actually quite common in affordable housing at this point, and that's because of the work of advocates over the last decade to try to actually test passive house in the affordable housing context. And we've demonstrated that the incremental cost of passive house is really, it's incremental. I've got the conclusion right in my statement there. It's relatively incremental and some of it is offset by energy savings in the operating period for the home. My organization actually is written into the state's subsidy regulations as the organization that has to provide support for the most energy-efficient projects. So we have a lot of depth in really evaluating projects for energy efficiency and climate resiliency. This would be a tool that would just further push the state and the development community to ensure that there is consistency in incorporating this kind of energy efficiency and resiliency into affordable housing. It's also healthier for the residents, provides cleaner air quality and generally a nicer experience of living in the home. Thank you.
Thank you. So, sorry about colleagues? Mr. Hellman?
Be happy to take questions. I just want to note that we have a couple other experts here to answer your questions. Just wanted to introduce them. So on the line, I believe, is Mike Champa, who is our Director of Inspection Services. And we also have the honor of having Ian Finlayson, who is the Deputy Director of Energy Efficiency Division with DOER. So he basically wrote the code and he's sitting right here. He's also an Arlington resident. So we're very lucky to have him to answer any technical questions about the code itself.
Great, thank you.
So, Helen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you all. This is a little bit of deja vu for me. I have the good fortune of being the Select Board representative to not only the Clean Energy Futures Committee after following an impressive run by Ms. Mahan, but also the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, so hello. But I've been, I've had a front row seat to seeing the development of this thinking and this code and the advocacy and the thinking in the town. What an embarrassment of riches we have in Arlington, such a deep bench, you know, sitting right in front of us of people with deep expertise in energy and housing, with such a love for your community. And I think that that, and then coupled with the incredible resource that we have in Ms. Fox and Mr. Poehler and the whole professional team to really make this happen, I'm just pleased as punch and really encouraged that, in the case of affordable housing financing, that this is not an impediment to the work that they're doing and that the communities that Ms. Fox cited have already adopted this clearly feel like this is not going to be an impediment to development in their communities where there's a lot of development going on. So that's good information. The only question I have is if somebody could detail what the six-month phase-in period would look like and just help us understand what that really is in practice.
I'm wondering if Mike can support answering this question. I think, I'll just say that there is some leverage to design that process. It's meant to be an on-ramp to support the development community. There are already many trainings provided. I know, I know this has been expressed as a desire from contractors and builders to have support with that. We provided that development forum earlier in February and I'm happy to support further training opportunities and education for the community locally in Arlington, but I think it would be a combination of education and ensuring that there are training opportunities available. But I'm wondering if Mike has anything to add based on his connection with the local community.
Yeah, so, I mean, that's basically, anytime that there's a major change that goes into effects, there's generally a six-month period where, you know, for educational purposes and so it doesn't, you can't just put a regulation like that into effect like immediately. It gives everyone a chance to become, you know, familiar with what needs to be done and find out, you know, how they're going to be building in the future.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Hellman?
Excuse me. I have this tickle that won't go away. Thank you for presenting this. I have a question and I'm not probably going to pose it artfully, so, but I'm going to do my best and hope that you figure out what I'm asking. But I do understand that you're pending taking any public comment, going to have a vote on this. I certainly would vote for it, but I want to wait till we get to the public hearing part. But my question would be, one of the really exciting things about net zero, clean energy, climate resiliency, for a layperson like myself, and I'm not a builder and I'm not in the building trades in any capacity right now, is there's an awful lot of, I don't want to say opportunities. What I'm wondering is, as we move forward, and I understand we're meeting with the builders to educate them in terms of what this new stretch code means, is there a way, I've just seen, just saw a flourishing of all these green energy companies, whether it's companies of 2 to 200, on everything with communities striving to get to net zero. And because it's a brand-new field, I'm just wondering, and I'm not saying this is a requirement, but is there something for builders that were either giving them as guidance to say as you move forward and you make these accommodations or you put in place so that whether it's passive house or brand-new construction and you're doing the top tier, either what they should look out for when they're either purchasing the actual equipment, when they're purchasing a company that's brand-new because this is a brand-new field? Or is it we're going to give builders the guidance on this is what the code is, this is what it means, and everybody's just going to do trial and error and it's sort of word of mouth? Like, you know, I hired, you know, Mahan Net Zero Consulting and the hardware broke down and duct tape didn't even work and they didn't really have the expertise. So I've asked that question, not artfully, but I was wondering if anyone or any ones could take a crack at that. And I'm just curious. I'm not saying it's some- I'm not saying it's something the town should do, but, and maybe the state's doing it. So that's my big encompassment question.
I'll take a stab at this, and then maybe somebody else can chime in if, if they have a, another answer here. But, so, one thing that I thought was exciting at our developer forum is we had a local HERS raider, so a, an expert on, on the energy efficiency requirements as part of the stretch code. We had him speak a little bit about his experience achieving buildings with a very high level of efficiency, what exactly what type of windows he used, and, and what were the specific requirements of the mechanical equipment and the spray foam insulation. And so I'm hopeful that there can be more examples that are, are shared among, among builders about what it takes to get to some of these requirements. I do think the state is providing that to an extent. I know Mass Save is putting on a lot of trainings, but if there's any way that we can help to encourage that conversation, I, I'm, you know, I'm open to, to doing that. I don't know if, Mike, you have anything to add here, or even if Ian has something to add about what the state is, is doing to encourage that, that sharing of resources and examples. I believe that gets at your question.
Sure. Do you want to jump in before we answer, or?
No, I mean, if I can. I can just, I think any plans for new construction will get submitted to the Building Department for review prior to issuance of a permit. So that would be, once the Building Department issues a permit, and Mike can confirm, that's the Building Department saying that your plans comply with what's necessary to build. So I think during that process, once this comes into play, is when the Building Department, they get plans that don't incorporate these changes, tell the applicants, you're denied your permits, you have to update your plans to conform with this, this, and this. So I think, and I certainly understand where there's local builders that come in to get the, the word out ahead of time, so you don't have that step and drag down the Building Department with plans that they have to review that don't confirm, conform. But I think at least prior to the step of them building the property and the Building Department coming and say, oh, you, you spent $100,000 to build this property, and you have to rip down the walls, I think those can be caught in the plan review stage. Sorry, I didn't mean to jump into your.
No, no, no. But my question based around case in point, there's a building in Boston on Federal Street, and I won't say the number. Construction company that was the main construction company is no longer in business blazing granite. Big huge lawsuit, I started out in land court. Big huge lawsuit, and just from my novice observation, basically what happened was one of the many subcontractors, and this is 25, 30 years ago, and there were new codes coming in, it really came down to a subcontractor that they hired besides crafts being done out of order, really messed up and didn't have any competence to doing correct chalk lines. And as it went through a land court, it became evident in the field that this wasn't a one time thing. So the, the thing I'm asking for is, you know, once they get the plans and they know, is there like a list of these are sort of approved by Mass Save by the town of Arlington? I'm not saying there should be, I'm just wondering, or is that something, this is a brand new field, and all these companies are breaking out, and we're going to have to do trial by error?
So I, I know Mass Save does have lists of certain equipment that meets their standards in order to be able to access incentives. I believe also lists of certain contractors. Mike, did you have a hand raised? I just want to.
Yeah, so, it, it's not really, they don't necessarily need a whole new education. It's, it's just a new way of doing, they're already, so they're already building these homes. And it, it's more who they have on their team now, like obviously they need a HERS raider. They, you know, they need to be a little more up to date on, on the, you know, the efficiency of equipment that they need to install. But it's not so much changing the landscape of, of building a home that, that, that you need, you know, that you need someone who's, has 10 years' experience in, in building green homes or in building passive homes. The, you know, the, the regulations allow for pathways that are, that the, the process is completely familiar to the builders out there today.
Okay, thank you. And I, I only ask that question as we're moving forward with our financial outlook, and we're going to be discussing an override in the future. I know when I walk in, the whole array of coffee shops, et cetera, that when I'm selling a possible override, anytime there's anything new, that you're doing something different, a different way, or it's brand new, when I'm trying to get those people, sometimes I may not even change their mind at all, just coming, but I could see the question where they're saying, and now you tell me it's going to cost me, and I'm in LA, and I got to find new people and how to build this house, and, and that's why I ask all those questions. I still, you know, of, of that smattering of people, I still may not convince all of them, but I just want to be able to go back and say that, you know, this is what I've heard from the committee, what I've heard from the building inspector. Thank you. That's the reason. I didn't ask it just to ask it, that was the reason. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sure, sure. So I think at this point, she's satisfied with this, so we can.
Just one question about the slide, where it said houses have to be pre-wired, is that new construction, that wasn't clear to me in that side? Okay. So it's not like some guy that's had his house for 50 years, that's to go retrofit his house. All right, I just want to make sure, because I was trying to think in my head, how you police that, for one thing, but yeah, that all makes sense to me. And again, I, I'm with my colleagues on this, I'm happy to support it. I think this is Arlington's shown leadership in this area. It's actually surprising that we're behind five other communities, but that's okay. And so I'm happy to move forward and continue us down that road. I, I said this during our discussion about the fossil fuel infrastructures. I renovated my house a couple of years ago, and we use the new electric, heating cooling systems, and they're amazing. They're much better than my old fossil fuel heating system that we have downstairs. So I wish I had it downstairs, maybe, maybe next time, but, so I'm happy to support this.
Thank you. I do have another question. What is, for the purposes of this, the effect, this being an effect for new construction, when someone like leaves just a wall up, you know, but it's really just a tear down of the house, would that, is that, would that sort of qualifies new construction for this, or would that be a renovation, albeit a major one? I'm guessing that our Inspection Services Director might, might have some insight into this.
Yeah, so, a, a, a home isn't considered a new home unless it's completely torn down, new foundation. And it, it, you know, they would, they would still be required to do a lot more than they previously were, but the, the whole point of these regulations is that, you know, the efficiency goes, comes from the footing of the, the footing of the house to the roof. It, so, they would be required to, for stricter regulations than if, you know, than obviously than just a renovation, but it's not a new home.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so I'm, I'm very much in favor of this. I just want to let people on Zoom know that, um, we're, we're, you know, we're, we're leaning very strongly towards this, you know? So if you have anything new to add, we're happy to hear from you, but we'll hear from you anyways, because it's a hearing, and we'll spend a half hour max on this. So if you bring up the timer for three minutes, Ian.
I see one hand raised at this time.
Okay, great. So we'll take Mr. Hamlin.
Sorry, there are a lot of buttons to push.
Yes.
I'm hoping you can hear me.
Just fine.
My name is Patrick Hamlin. I'm from Precinct 5 on Park Street, and I've been with this process now for a very long time, just going all the way back to the first fossil fuel bylaw. And I submitted a letter that dealt with the issues in general, and I just wanted to say something briefly about some of the discussion that has happened in the last few minutes. Major renovations is one of those things that last year, in the resolution that town meeting passed, we wanted to make sure it was covered by the specialized code. And that's one of the points on which our urgings on D U E R did not prevail. But the demonstration project that Talia referred to would cover major renovations, including the client, including the gut renovations that we see constantly, at least on my side of Arlington. And it's very important ultimately to take a step beyond what we're doing tonight, or you're doing tonight, and town meeting will do in April, to know that there's more that needs to be done. And that's one of the things that needs to be done, is to address what is actually one of the biggest categories of building in a, in a town like, in a town like ours. And all of the other communities that have done the stretch code, the, have done the demonstration project are pretty much in the same boat. Second is, I think that Ms. Mahan is on a really important point, that ultimately when we get, this is going to start slowly, there's only a certain amount of new building that takes place, but there's more that will be taking place in the future, and eventually there will be renovations and so on. And taking a step like we're hoping to do now is something that helps create a market of people who know how to do these things and can do them efficiently and can do them economically. And I think that that is one of the important things that happens when you take a major step forward like this. With respect to compliance with the regulations, much of what the new stretch code and the new specialized stretch code would do is have you go out and retain a HERS raider, who now does modeling, that's a little different from what he would do before, in order to get things down to, or to assess that things are down to the right level. The same thing is true of passive house certified. So a lot of the lack of knowledge that may happen at the local level, people will be buying by going to people who've been doing this for years. Over time, that capacity is going to have to expand, and that's an important point. But you have to take the step now to be able to create the market that will support the much more energetic matters that we'll have to do in the future. So I'm pleased to hear that you're, you're leaning towards this and hope that you will, you will pass it. It's a step, but it's an important step, and Arlington needs to take it.
Thank you, Ms. Hamlin. Any other hands? I'm not seeing any, anyone in the room?
No, seeing nobody else.
Okay, Mr. Thomas? Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd love to move approval for this and recommend a positive action to town meeting. I am deeply proud that Arlington is a leader, and, and I'm grateful for Mr. Hamlin's comments reminding us that there's, there's more room for us to grow here and to do even better than this. But this is an excellent foundation. I think that we are really walking the talk when we talk about sustainability and, and moving towards the critical goal of net zero carbon emissions. So thank you again for your work on this.
Second.
Any other questions, comments? All, I'll say is that the five communities that we're behind are very good communities. I think all of them are cities except for Watertown, you know, so.
No, what's council city? That's true. That's true.
That's true. What's that? What's that?
I don't know. Let's not debate.
Thank you. And I'm going to trust from your position that you, you know, Caroline Bayes would, would give me a hard time about messing that up, yes.
She would.
And so, and, well, I just have to use this, you know? There's no need to stretch this out, so we're just going to, we're just going to move along.
Can I hear that again?
Can I hear him with it?
Sorry. And also, I was kind of wondering, what's the next, what the next one was going to be, if it's going to be like the super, you know? But, but what really, what kind of, what is in the works next? I mean, is there something like, are we thinking like another level? You know? Yeah. Sometimes, you know, when like a new O S comes out, it's like, you know, you already have the next one already in the works, I mean, and.
Well, maybe Ian can actually answer this, and we should probably use his expertise since we brought him here. But, I mean, I, I think the next step is definitely the, the fossil fuel demonstration project, at least in the immediate term, which we can discuss perhaps another time. But I don't know if, Ian, if you would like to speak to the, to the next horizon for, for the stretch code development? That would be great.
Thanks. Ian Finnlayson, I'm a resident of Russell Terrace, and I also work for the Department of Energy Resources. I'm, I'm going to first take the opportunity to address one of the earlier questions about the transition and preparing people. And so I think one of the biggest changes between the stretch code and the specialized code, and the naming is the fault of the legislature rather than, than D U E R, or the inspiration, one of the major differences was mentioned earlier, and that's the requirement for passive house for multifamily buildings. So we introduced passive house as an optional pathway in the building code back in 2012. And then, from then on, we started funding demonstration projects and workforce training and so on. And in the current Mass Save budget, there's, I think, $1.6 million available for passive house training and technical assistance. That's spread over the three-year period that we're in now from 2022 to 2024. So I, I say all that just to give you some context that we're not just sort of springing this on the design community. There's been a long engagement with the affordable housing community in particular, and the Mass Save program has a little over 10,000 units of housing that are currently in the pipeline to meet passive house standards. So, so we're definitely looking at growing the market and building the market and building the expertise in the design and construction community before we bring things into building code. So to give you a couple of examples to actually answer the question about what's coming next, one is that when we put out a straw proposal last year for what should be in the stretch code and specialized code, we had provisions for measuring embodied carbon. And so that's the carbon that's in the materials that go into the construction. Things like concrete are very carbon intensive. Other materials can, can have a lot of greenhouse gas emissions associated with production. And the response we got from a lot of public comments was that maybe that would be rushing something into the market quite quickly. So we are continuing to do our homework on that. Tomorrow, I will be working on funding requests from the federal government for additional funding to do more research on, on that area. We're also looking at, you know, as people get more solar panels and more battery storage and more electric vehicles, and also water heaters with heat pumps that are all electric, can we use those resources as storage during the day so that we can then take those demand uses offline during peak periods? And then new construction can actually contribute to the electric grid, whereas at the moment we see new construction as sort of adding pressure on the electric grid. It can actually be helpful to the, the electric grid and, and reduce costs and, and damage, quite frankly, when there's peak hour congestion on the grid. So there are a couple of areas. A third one that I think is worth mentioning is commercial building retrofits, and how do we handle those in the building code in the most cost-effective and sustainable manner? So that's about as far as my crystal ball goes, but those are things that we're already working on that will be coming at some point in the future.
Nice. Well, thank you. Thank you. Those, those informed, very interesting, I appreciate it. So, on a motion to move positive action on this article by Mr. Thomas and a second by Mr. Hurd, Mr. Heim.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. Dingotts?
Yes.
Commander's vote.
Thank you, everybody. All righty, so Article number 14. I'm going to ask that we table this, you know, until after the elections, you know, primarily because, you know, because it's me, you know, and, and I really don't want me to put my colleagues in any kind of awkward position, because I really want you to vote me what you think would be the correct vote in your heart. But it's not that you wouldn't, but I just want it to be completely, completely easy, totally, as easy as possible for you to do that and not worry about me, any optics, meaning if, you know, you want to vote a different way, you know? And, and then it kind of brings up the general situation about how we handle the articles, I mean, that are put up, I mean, by members of the select board. Reason we're here is because we, I think it was the last meeting before the warrant closed, which was a Monday, and the warrant's gonna close four days later. And I had been to a L R P meeting the previous Friday and was just, I mean, really taken by the need for us to generate new growth, I mean, because that really would help with with the override, you know? And, and I really wanted to figure out how we could do that, you know? And I kind of remembered how we formed a study committee, I mean, for using an adult advisory board, and that gave us a lot of insight, insights, but more so what that did was it allowed us to have a conversation with the community, you know? And I felt that would be even more so the case with this, you know? And, and with the using young adult advisory board, you know, it was my first year on the board, you know? And I had proposed it as an article and it was taken up by a select board and I just kind of figured that was automatic, you know? But, but we were having a moment, you know, about how the select board handles proposing articles, I mean, and when I suggested it, it, it had, there was no response to it. So, so I could either wait another year, you know? And I thought, you know what? I'll just go out and, and get, get it as a resident. And I was happy I did, you know, because I really got to engage with people as I talked with them about it. It, it kind of sharpened the idea. It made me realize, I mean, that there was some reception to it. So I came out of it thinking, you know, we should all, I mean, anytime anyone from the select board wants to have an article in the warrant, should go out just like a resident and, and get it. And you put it on. But then that does bring up, how do we handle it? I mean, and so should we then like always have it such that, I mean, any article put out into the select board is heard after the election season? That's for us to sky and it's not the conversation to have now because it wasn't on the agenda of the discussion. I'm just kind of giving you the, the prelude to it, you know? But, but I was having a conversation and it was like, okay, well, if you were to move forward this now, I mean, would you, the chair, like turn it over to the vice chair and defend it, I mean, or would you just go to the microphone, you know, and defend it, you know, just from here? Because when it came to the using young adult advisory board, everyone knew that I had put that forward, I mean, and I kind of made the case for it, I mean, and the, and the board selected and voted positive action to move it to, to town meeting. So I asked Mr. Heim to just kind of let the board know, like, how is it, how we should handle the article put out by a member of the select board either now or after the election. Sean?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As the board knows, the board generally acts as a body when the select board is putting its name behind something. That doesn't mean that you can't file a resident petition article. While resident petition articles sort of has a main proponent and a voice and a face attached to it, the reality is that resident petition article is signed by at least 10 registered voters. So Mr. Diggins can certainly propose an article to the board and can advocate on behalf of it and the board can ask questions the same way you ask any other proponent of an article and open it up for public comment. You know, in this particular case, the manager, other folks might have some perspective on it, but, you know, the long and short of it is, is that the board certainly, there's no rule that prohibits a board member from signing a resident petition and putting it forward. You just treat the chair of the board as the petitioner. I don't necessarily think, Mr. Diggins, that some specific process needs to be handled in the sense that, you know, you're the chair of the board, you're allowed to vote on your own warrant article. It's not like a conflict of interest type of situation. I think that the board is pretty unanimous with one another. If you had a slightly more contentious collegial relationship, it would be different. But I think that you could proceed essentially as normal. Whether or not you believe as a group that you'd like to wait until after the election in some way, shape or form, I think it's really up to, to you to decide. I don't think I would feel comfortable commenting on that specific portion of things.
Right. Okay. I appreciate that, Mr. Hurd.
I'm happy to respect your wishes, but I don't see any reason why we can't just take this up and you can be the chair of the meeting. I don't feel any undue influence with you as the chair to, if we disagree with it, then we disagree. I am, I am fine with the article that you're proposing. So, and I think just from a practical standpoint, to push a warrant article hearing out in a couple of weeks could delay the delivery of the second, yeah, the handbook report and whatnot. So, I mean, I would, I'm happy to hear from my colleagues, but I don't see any reason why we can't just take this up.
Yeah. Well, Mrs. Helms.
Thank you, Mr. Hurd. I actually would like to move to postpone to April 3rd for this, to a date certain. I think, but I, first question for our board administrator, Ms. Mar, do you see, foresee any difficulty with the sequence of that affecting the production of the select board reports?
No. On April 3rd, we'll actually have three other warrant article hearings at that time. So it would be appropriate to move to that date.
So we have to think about, you know, everything else we have to, we have to do. I think two things. I actually, just for myself, would, would appreciate the courtesy that, that the chair is suggesting for just having the freest possible discussion and vote. But I also, and, and Mr. Corsi, of course, isn't here as well. But I also would like to know if town staff, you know, have, town staff have an opportunity to weigh in on this, if the A R B has a view on this. I think that they're relevant parties to the conversation as well and I'd like to give them a little bit of time to prepare.
Second.
That's fine with me and I, I guess I would just ask, A R B sort of fold that into the planning department because I know we hired a consultant to look at industrial zone and et cetera, et cetera. And I just don't want to, I want to make sure that you have all the information moving forward when you do the compilation of the committee to report to the 2025 town meeting versus the 20,225. I assume that will be corrected as we move forward. Unless maybe we're giving you the gift of almost longevity perpetuity, that you have to report back to the 20,225 town meeting. So, that's all. Thank you.
I, I saw that. I thought I'd taken it out, okay, but, but just so you know, I'm working on a side by now, I believe that's like set, being, I believe, a book that's set out to go years.
So I think Mr. Hurd's seconded Mr. Helms' motion to table to April 3rd, so I won't, I won't third it.
Yeah. Yeah. And, yeah, I, I need, I need a little more time, you know? You know, I need, like, my little ducks that were in a row kind of got out of the row a little bit, so I need to figure out what's going on. So, so there's that. I mean, so thank you though, and I appreciate it. And so on a motion to table to the 3rd by Mr. Helms and a second by Mr. Hurd, Mr. Heim.
Mr. Hurd?
This is maybe an annoying question, but do we have to ask for public comment on a motion to table?
Not if you're not going to substanceively address the warrant article.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Hurd, Mr. Helms, Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
It's for your vote.
Thank you.
Mr. Chick, I just asked Ms. Morrison.
Sorry. I was just answering, you know, real quick. They needed an address, that's all.
Oh, that's all. Okay. Sure, sure. All right. I forget it. I forget anyways. So it's like, it's like, oh. Alrighty, so we are on article 15, vote board of youth services updates. And I don't have on my notes associated with it, so that's why I'm not calling out the names.
They have, there's someone with their hand raised.
Okay.
Kristin Barnicle.
Okay. Yep.
I'll promote them at this time.
Okay. Thank you. Hello?
Hi.
Hi. How you doing? We're good.
Good. How are you?
Doing fine. And so let's hear the rationale behind article 15.
Sure. So for starters, my name is Kristin Barnicle. I have lived in East Arlington since 2010 and I've served on the Board of Youth Services since 2016. I'm the designated spokesperson tonight, but also on the Zoom are Justine Block, who's the chair of the board, and Colleen Legere, who is the director of the Arlington Youth Counseling Center. So as you see, the Board of Youth Services is looking to make some updates to better reflect our role and to ensure that the board remains vibrant and reflective of the community. For starters, we'd like to change our name. Our primary role is to support and provide guidance to the Arlington Youth Counseling Center, AKA A Y C C. We lead fundraising efforts to support A Y C C as it strives to meet the ever-growing demand for its services. We organize community-wide events where patients, parents and other residents can hear from speakers about mental health issues facing our youth. And we collaborate with other town organizations to support youth, for example, with the Holiday Health Program. So we would like to change our name to accurately reflect this role. Our recommendation is that we change the name from the Board of Youth Services to the A Y C C Advisory Board. A key reason the board began discussing a number of changes is that we've had difficulty recruiting new board members. So as part of the exercise we've done over the past year, we've developed a job description for board members, we've reduced our meeting schedule from monthly to quarterly, and we've created subcommittees to work on specific initiatives. We anticipate these changes will help with recruitment, so we're holding off on any recruitment until we receive town meeting approval. So just a snapshot of our current board, we have eight board members, all are white women, two have high school-aged children, the rest of us have kids who've already gone through the Arlington Public Schools. All of us have served for more than one term, most have served for more than two and many for much longer. So we're an awesome board, we're dedicated to A Y C C, but we see the need for diversity of perspectives and lived experiences. And so we think there are three vehicles that could create, maintain a more diverse and vibrant board. One is allowing people who work with youth in Arlington but don't necessarily live in Arlington to be board members. The second is to institute term limits, one three-year term with the opportunity to renew for a second three-year term. And then having some flexibility about the number of board, board members, so no less than seven, but no more than 11, depending on how recruitment goes. So I'd like to invite Colleen Legere to speak, just to give some words of support if she is able to join.
I would just ask that she raise her hand in Zoom.
Oh.
We're having, there we go. Thank you.
Okay. Great. Yeah, it's a little tricky when you join. It takes a minute to redirect.
We're having a little technical difficulties with the attendee list as well, so.
In the meantime, if you guys have questions, I'm happy to answer.
Is she ready? Is she on?
Yes, she's here.
All right. Yeah. I must see any hands here, so we can. Hello?
Hi. Good evening. How are you?
I'm fine.
Kristin, thank you and thank you for reviewing the proposal. And just again, I'm Colleen Legere, I'm the director of the Arlington Youth Counseling Center. And first I would like to say that this board, most of the members on this board have been in support of A Y C C, acting on this board for a number of years, some as long as I've been there for 10 years or more. And they have been really integral in, in supporting the agency and helping us achieve financial sustainability, as that has been our goal over the past few years. And we've also grown in capacity with the support of the board to try to meet the demand for mental health services among youth and families in the community. And making these, making these adjustments, but looking at the structure and the composition, I think will really help us to respond in a, in a thoughtful and equitable way in meeting those needs of the community. And, you know, especially with the term limits and involvement of providers in the community who may not live in the community, I think could be a beneficial asset, as, as Krista mentioned, and their lived experience and their expertise in advising A Y C C as we move forward in the next five, 10 years. So I thank you for, for considering this proposal.
Thank you. So I'll turn to my colleagues. Mr. Helms?
Thank you. The, the A Y C C is such a valuable resource in town and, and it's incredibly important and always has been, but I think we've seen with the past years and the cumulative stress on young people and families, particularly with the pandemic and, and other economic stresses, that the need is greater than ever and I'm really grateful for all that you do to meet that need. And I'm very happy to support these changes. One question I have for you is, and I could probably find it in the detail, but you would know the answer off the, off the top of your head. If, is there a, a, does it specify with respect to having somebody be a member who doesn't live in the community? Are there, are, is that, could the whole board be made up of non-residents? In theory, not that you'd do that, but, you know, or is there, is there a limitation on that? Is it one or two slots? What's, what's the vision for that? Non-resident membership?
That's a great question. We didn't get that specific, but I think it may, would make sense to, to come up with some guidelines about, you know, off the top of my head, no more than 50% would be non-residents, but I don't know, Colleen, if you have thoughts about that? I agree. Great question or great suggestion. I'd, I'd agree, or maybe even fewer than that could be non-residents. I think also critical, the parent of younger children, that perspective is important. But there are, there are providers, there are teachers or providers in the community who equally could contribute their perspective and many of them don't live in the community.
And what's the, what's the proposed size of the board?
It would, it would be as many as 11 and as few as 7.
Do you, could you recommend appropriate cap for non-residents?
Kristin, did you?
We didn't, but we, we could.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. And Attorney Heim is raising his hand, I think may have some insight that.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Helms, just to be clear, the board is currently 11. I think what they're asking for is more flexibility to have a larger or smaller board depending upon the essentially level of volunteers that are trying to get into these slots. We've had similar situations with boards in the past where we've sort of constructively shrank them depending on conditions that would require some sort of vote either of the board itself, the Board of Youth Services, or another body. If the board would like some details to be sorted out, but you're inclined towards positive action, it's something I'd be happy to work with Ms. Legere or Ms. Barnicle on any of those details in terms of just sketching it out into a more specific voting comment.
That's, that's fine. Thank you. And the reason I'm asking this is I'm aware that the Civilian Police Advisory Commission gives the Board of Youth Services, which would be renamed a nomination for, for that. So my thinking is, I'm not necessarily opposed to non-residents to have a voice in that, but I think I would want to make sure that the majority of the board at least would be, would be Arlington residents and maybe even more than that. And, and maybe in the line, my suggestion might be along the lines of that refined specific motion, Attorney Heim, to contemplate if it would be possible or prudent or practical to make the motion, create the motion in such a way that it would address this specific issue of appointments? So that that could be perhaps restricted community residents or not? I don't know. And I think you, I would want, I would want to, to get the professional input from our, from our professionals here and our volunteers. But, but I do recognize that the nature of this board, it's a professional practice and we want to be able to avail ourselves of sufficient expertise, including that might be outside the community, but would include people who know and care about Arlington families and youth. That'd be my suggestion. That, that's all.
Anyone else? I'm sorry, Mr.?
If I may, Mr. Helmuth.
Yes, yes, Attorney.
Just one thing to note about the Police Civilian Advisory Board, which is an interesting safeguard that was kind of baked into it. Each of the appointing authorities, actually, they're not actually appointing authorities, they're nominating.
They're nominated, yes, yes.
And the manager has the final appointment.
Correct.
So there is a little bit of extra, if you will. So I just wanted to note it for the purpose of your discussion. Thank you.
Mr. Hurd.
So based on Mr. Helmuth's comments, are you looking for us to discuss a figure as far as a percentage, or have them come back? I mean, I certainly understand the concern. I don't anticipate that an Arlington Board is going to get flooded with non-residents applicants. I would say it was probably more prudent to come up with a percentage figure versus if we're going to have a, give them the leeway to have a 7 to 11-member Board, just to say X percent. Off the top of my head, I'm thinking 1/3%. And that would give you, if you were seven members, that would be no more than two. Sorry, Attorney Heim.
I'm sorry to interject. I just, Mr. Chairman, it does get tricky. And one of the things we've learned from some of these more experimental ways of populating Boards, it does get tricky with percentages because everybody's terms don't necessarily line up well. And you wouldn't want to have somebody kicked off the Board because the percentage gets, so if there's a number, in some ways, that number might be helpful. Maybe that number should be on the lower end of things. But, you know, if you wanted to say at least five members.
Okay, sorry, let me take you off.
No, no, I'm sorry, sir, go ahead.
No, well, I guess on that, if you say 7 to 11, and 9 is the median, then we go with 3, 1/3 to 9. So I guess that would be my proposed number. If we're looking for a number tonight.
No more than three being non-residents.
Right. No more than three non-residents, yeah.
And I think, you know, I encourage Attorney Heim to work with the folks who I have ambushed with this question. Not my intention, because it didn't occur to me. I ambushed myself with it tonight, so, in the moment. But, you know, to work with them, and if you have feedback on that, I'd certainly be happy to hear that. Thank you, Mr. Hurd, for rescuing my fragments of an idea.
And of course, Tom Meade can feel free to amend that to whatever extent they prefer.
I was just wondering if we still run into that problem with overlapping terms, maybe if the number. But we'll figure it out, you know, run a simulation, you know. So it is a hearing, you know, so let's see if anyone in Zoom land or here wants to say anything. Raise your hand electronically if you want to speak.
Seeing no hands raised.
All right, it's back to us. Move, move. Second.
All right, any other discussion? All right, well, I'm definitely in favor. And so I'm happy to see you here, and trying to do something to keep the Board, well, actually make it more and more diverse. And it's a good movement. And I also see a lot of potential for the Young Arlington Collaborative to work with you all. I think, I mean, I think it's a, I think the two, yeah, I think the two really work well together. I mean, I was a little bit concerned when I saw this that you were thinking about folding, you know, and I'm glad that's not the case. I mean, it's because you provide great work, you know, so. All righty, so on a motion to move positive action by Ms. Mahan, a second by Mr. Helmuth, Mr. Heim.
Mr. Hurd.
Yes.
Mr. Helmuth.
Yes.
This is Mahan.
Yes.
Mr. Diggs.
Yes.
And she had Ms. Fulte.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
So, Mr. Helmuth, we're going to Article 17, so.
Oh, thank you, that's my turn. Mr. Chairman, I need to recuse myself as I did the first time this came up. No offense at all to Mr. Slotnick, but because I'm employed by the Legislature, required by conflict of interest law to use myself.
So we were picking up, you know, where we left off on this, I think. So who's going to lead us in the discussion on this?
Good evening, I'm Larry Slotnick. I live in Precinct 7 in East Arlington. So I was here as the proponent of Article 17 two weeks ago. We, I didn't come in two weeks ago with the actual language of the article. In the succeeding two weeks, I worked with Attorney Heim to develop, Mr. Heim mostly developed the specific language for what would be a proposed bylaw, which I'm not completely sure has been circulated to the select Board.
We have it.
Okay. Also during the hearing two weeks ago, I believe a request was made to Mr. Poohler to survey the department heads that I had surveyed and gotten limited response to. I'm not sure Mr. Poohler received results from his inquiries in that direction. So I'm here to answer questions that come up unless you need me to sort of re-present the idea behind allowing digital legal notices.
I think we're all set for that. So, Mr. Heim, Mr. Poohler.
I did conduct a survey both by email, and then at the last department heads meeting, we had a discussion among all the department heads about their use of digital notices. I think there was generally very favorable reception to this idea. There was a lot of concern that at some point, if there is no local paper, it's going to mean, it's going to get a lot more expensive to publish digital notices. And I thought, and people were receptive, I think both the idea of having the ability to choose either to put a notice in a local print paper or a local online source. I think there was a lot of perception too that the town website is probably a place where a lot of people would go to look for information about any kind of legal notices or legal procedures. We already do that now when we do, for example, bids, where we're required to put it on the state registry. When we put out RFPs, we also put those on the town website, and you can go back and look back for years to see what those documents were. So I would say the overall feeling among the department heads was that they would welcome a change, to give them a little more flexibility, and a great concern that at some point soon they're going to need a change like this. Otherwise, they're really going to get stuck paying a lot of money for notices that would run into Globe or Herald, which I don't know how many people in Arlington would then look at to try to find.
Mr. Heim.
Ms. Diggs, just to provide some additional context, what I did was I took some of the comments and concerns of the Board with what Mr. Slotnick's presentation and just her general idea was, along with the feedback that the manager garnered. And I tried to put together something that essentially would authorize the Board to decide what the adequate means of publication, only for town notices. This isn't for anybody else. This is just for town, essentially, legal ads. And so it will be, if this was passed, it would be up to you to decide up to two, I'm sorry, at least two from this list of five. So that would be a newspaper of local or general circulation, germane to what Mr. Hurd's sort of feedback was, that there are people who still like to get these notices in newspaper, a newspaper's website would be a second one, websites reporting local news and opinion which satisfy all criteria for digital publication set forth in Chapter 4, Section 13B. What that essentially is, is if you had some of the online type of resources we have in Arlington, you wouldn't necessarily be able to satisfy it by putting it on the A-list unless it was something that was accessible and had the capacity to essentially archive legal notices for people's accessibility. So there's some standard baked in there. Fourth would be a statewide website, which is sort of already in the law. And then fifth would be the town's website. So essentially, the authority to decide what sufficient legal notice would be vested with the Board. And in a majority vote of the Board would decide, okay, for right now, there's a newspaper of local circulation, it's going to be a newspaper, and it's going to be the town's website. If at a certain point in time, it just doesn't become practical anymore, for that to be the case, you could take another vote, and you could say, look, it's not economically feasible. These ads in the Globe, for example, cost twice as much as they cost in the Advocate, which is about right.
Four times.
Four times, okay, even more than that, sorry, Larry. And we're going to take a vote to amend this. The only other detail, I wouldn't say wrinkle, just detail on it, is I don't, there are very few circumstances in which the school department should run legal ads. But to the extent that they do, I vested that discretion with them as opposed to the select Board, if there's any need for the school department to run legal ads. I'll be honest with you, I strained to think of exactly what that would be. But I just wanted to make sure that in any event that took place, that the school department would, the school committee would be the one setting the criteria for that, rather than the select Board out of respect for their jurisdiction. So I think I've captured what, and I appreciate Mr. Slotnick's patience on this, the intent of Mr. Slotnick, and as well as the Board's sort of comments about what might make you more comfortable.
Thank you, Mr. Heim. Mr. Hurd.
Thank you, Mr. Slotnick and Attorney Heim, for your work on this. As Attorney Heim said, I think the changes and the updates satisfy my concerns that I had. I'm happy to move for positive action with the changes as made. Say, Attorney Heim, with your A-list comments, you sound very towny there.
I strive to, thank you, sir.
I will definitely second that. And Attorney Heim answered my question because I saw you read the language in there for the school side. It's really straining in my head to try to figure. So thank you for, I'm like, I must be losing it because I should know what legal notices the schools do. And I do want to thank Mr. Slotnick for bringing this to us because I think we'll probably be facing it much, much sooner rather than later. And it's nice to have a process, Mr. Hurd's comments, the five options, which could always be added or amended too. And I want to thank the town manager for discussing it with department heads, so that I think that with the exception of a new department head coming on board, when she or he is faced with this situation, they already know that you don't have to resort to Globe or Herald, you know, check back in with the town manager, pending the vote of town meeting. And I think that's a good conversation to have because I'd hate to have somebody do something that, you know, they get $10,000, $40,000 into it, which can happen very quickly in press mailings. And that money goes fast. So thank you, Mr. Chas, for Mr. Hurd's motion.
Yes, yes, yeah, I'm very happy to support this too. And that's an elegant solution, Mr. Heim. And the pick 205, I like it nicely, very nicely.
Rename that 205, I think that, go ahead, sorry.
And you're giving me the gavel for this. So anyways, yeah, so, yes, yes. So on a motion to move positive action by Mr. Hurd, a second by Ms. Mahan. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Diggs.
I'm sorry, it is a hearing.
Yeah, I forgot, yeah, so we're revisiting. So thank you, so, thank you both. So anyone want to comment on this?
Seeing no hands raised.
Okay, that's fine. So, so, all right, so on a motion to move positive action by Mr. Hurd, a second by Ms. Mahan, Mr. Heim.
Mr. Hurd.
Yes.
This is Mahan.
Yes.
Mr. Diggs.
Yes.
It's a 3-0 vote with Mr. Helmuth recusing himself.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
So only you're here.
All right, so now we are on our final votes. Articles review, Article 9, 12, 13, 16, 19, 20, 63, 64, and 66.
Move approval, final votes and comments, if that's okay. Mr. Helmuth, I don't have to separate any out. Okay, move approval, final votes and comments.
Thank you.
Thank you for asking.
So, did you both say second at the same time?
Nope.
Okay, all right, you just said something, okay, all right. All right, I don't have anything to add, fine. All righty, so that was just a nod, all right. Okay, so on motion by Ms. Mahan, a second by Mr. Hurd.
Mr. Hurd.
Yes.
Mr. Helmuth.
Yes.
This is Mahan.
Yes.
Mr. Diggs.
Yes.
It's a 4-0 vote.
Thank you. So updates.
Who's that by?
So, I'm sorry. I'm just going to risk forward communicating on this rather than last week. So it's just, just to make sure that we're all on the same page with the components, the elements that we're thinking about writing into the temporary adjustment of the policy. So I just kind of wanted to list out all the things we discussed. And I guess if there are any comments on any of these, I mean, that you want to give me as guidance as I tried to rewrite that part of policy. I'm not quite sure how I'm going to do it. And I looked at it, and I think I'm going to end up just kind of putting in a section, you know, as opposed to rewriting, like redlining the policy. Because it's just, I just don't see, I can't figure out how to do it. So if someone has some insights into that, fine. Otherwise, I'll just maybe create a section, say, for, from June 1 through November 30, this is what applies, I mean, to overnight permanent parking. So one change from last time is that I want to bring the cap down from 300 to 200, I mean, just to give us a little more headroom should things fill up fast. I mean, we do initially, I mean, no restrictions, you know, but then, and the majority is, I mean, we pause based on what we see, you know, whether to have people come in to us in reasons that we have to make a determination about. One per household, one side of the street only, you know. Another little minor thing that we hadn't discussed, I would like to limit the parking to the street on which they live. Right now, the permanent parking says, like, you've already placed. And, I mean, that's the same thing as the street, but I just kind of wanted to specify street, especially if we do get, you know, into the east, I mean, and we are limited to one household, but we could be three houses, I mean, or three cars in front of one, well, in front of one address, you know. And the other is to, in order to prevent having a street get clogged, I mean, it would additionally be limited, I mean, to the amount of, the number of parking spaces on one side of the street. And as I told Ms. Meyer, if we see a street that gets maybe three or four requests, I think it'll be just as easy as taking a satellite to, you know, from Google, to get a sense of how many parking spaces or the cap there. Failure to move a car will mean loss of street overnight parking, but they will have the lot spot, you know. And since our last meeting, we have confirmed, I mean, that during snow emergencies, I mean, they can put their car in a municipal lot. So they get a spot, get a spot in a lot. And anything else here? So, yeah, we'll review the reasons for the permit request at the end of November. I mean, I think that's something we can put in place. I mean, if we decide to move forward, like annually, let's say we don't want to do the evaluation, but at some point annually, we can, you know, reduce, especially if we occupy ourselves, add the cap. And then, of course, I said we pause in November, assess, you know, and we can start the assessment before we pause, but then try and make a determination by January 1, how we move forward. Well, if we move forward, then, how we move forward. And, well, if we move forward, then, how we move forward, if we do, do we increase the cap? I mean, do we continue with the auto, or do we, yeah, discuss things, so, um, that's about it, you know, so. I guess, Mr. Hurd.
Try not to have forty-five minute conversations. I'll go with whatever the board decides. So, with the pilot, a little bit weary about having a strict cap, because if you want to assess the data as it's gonna be, in, unless we're gonna cap it in perpetuity. I, you know, I'm trying to say, you know, if all of a sudden, in the first week, you get three hundred and fifty applicants, and we only give two hundred out, we know that there's a demand for three hundred and fifty people, and if we wanna assess the data and see how this will be, we should, you know, do it, practice like you play. Um, but, again, if the board thinks two hundred's the number, that's fine. Um, oh, where it's one side of the street parking, are we gonna set, is it odd evens, or on odd years, odd side of the houses, just so that will be in the policy, so people know. I'd like to, I mean, I certainly understand the rationale, and I think it's good that people are held accountable. In the case of snow emergencies, I'd like to maybe build in, you know, a one time, you get a warning, as in the event that, I mean, some, some people just don't know when this is, we're still emergency, I think the other day, we didn't have any snow, so somebody might not, might have the car out there, not thinking that it's snow emergency, so we would like to have at least one, you know, if someone gets pinged and says, listen, we noticed you didn't move the car, you know, it's snow emergency, just so you know, the next time you do it, you're gonna lose your ability to park in the street.
It's off of street lane too, you know, so.
Yeah, or whatever it's, I mean, I just, it just strikes me that sometimes you need to just at least give somebody one, one referment. Um, but, again, I'll go with the, the majority of the board on this. The one thing that I was thinking about the other day is where this, your neighbor complaint, that's how currently our overnight parking is policed by neighbor complaints. Is there a mechanism where if someone calls the, around the police department to report that a car is parked overnight, can the police department say to them, well, did you go first verify whether or not it had a sticker to try to prevent, where, where now we have cars in the street, and we might give out two hundred permits, and then, you know, five hundred people have cars parked in the street overnight, it's kinda onerous for the police department to be coming out and responding to all these calls when they're validly parked cars. Am I saying that? It is a point coming across, I'm just saying, that all of a sudden, we still have neighbors who are complaining about cars that are parked in the street, and they're validly parked cars, our APD is gonna have to respond to up to two hundred cars that don't, aren't in violation, I guess is what I'm trying to say. So I, I don't know how we do that, or what the mechanism is, and that can sort of be flushed out in the enforcement.
Right.
But it's just something that I thought of, that, I mean, could be a little bit of a debacle for APD, at least in the, the first instance.
Yeah, yeah, I, 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 you know, so, yeah, and, and so, I mean, certainly can check with the chief and all that, and you kind of brought up a possible solution, so I can ask them if they, how going.
Well, that's what I'm thinking, it'd be part of the thing that, that requires them to verify that, how, how your police, that somebody actually went up and verified it, I don't know.
Thank you, um, this is like a good list to me, one question I have, and not, not for an answer tonight, but just for you to chase down, um, is the enforceability of the loss of overnight street parking and the way that would work. Do they still have a sticker, do we ask them to turn in their stickers, do we ask them to peel the sticker off? You know, I, I don't know.
Yeah.
So that's just a question.
Yeah, and I thought about that, you know, because we still get the lot spots, you know.
Right, exactly, do we do that? Um, my biggest question is, what happens at the end of November is the intent that these permits would become invalid unless we extend the program. What are we gonna tell people? Are we telling people that this may well be only good until November? Or are we, are we issuing permanent permits, or at least an annual, an annual permit, the assumption that it would renew? Um, I think that we need, I would wanna know what I'm voting on in that respect. And I don't, you know, whatever, what I'm gonna propose, would just suggest that that be made explicit.
Sorry, that was, that was another comment that I had. I think we should end it, review the data, and then determine how many permits we've gotten. Have Chief Flaherty or Officer Rato come in and give us an update from the APD's perspective, as to what their thoughts were, get some thoughts from, I, I don't think it should just keep going. And we also, at that time, need to reassess how many permits we have, how we're gonna, I think in the, I mean, it's a pilot, and we let people know that this is a pilot, just so you know, don't get used, don't buy another car, because we're giving you this permit, because this is gonna end, and we're gonna, we can't guarantee that it's gonna go beyond November.
I would say, um, oh, Mr. Hurd. Thank you, that's a good, good expansion of the point, I, I agree wholeheartedly on that. Um, and for that reason, I'm comfortable with a smaller cap as well, but, you know, I don't, it's not a hill I wanna die on. I would, uh, one possibility could be that if, if people do, I think it would be very wise not to buy another car, given this, but, you know, that we could, could we keep the town lock provision, even if we were to decide to continue the, the overnight parking? I don't know, and again, that kinda goes back to my first question, though. Is that, is that even enforceable, or how, what would the mechanism of that be? But, but I do like the idea of a real pause and a really violation. I would suggest, we can decide this later, in addition to all the good ideas Mr. Hurd had, that we invite the public to contact us, perhaps inviting people on the streets that have permits, or just, you know, which would be a public forum, but, but just to do some really good listening as part of the data collection.
Sorry, I was just talking about my head, how many months is that? So I just wanted to confirm, so for the pilot, we're gonna charge people half of three hundred.
Yes. I, I did June one, because I don't, I don't know if we have the time to pull it off by May one. So, I can have a conversation with folks if we decide to vote on it, and, and if it seems we can pull it up, I mean, what, what, the alternative is push it back into December, I mean, but I was thinking that we was do, start doing some evaluation in November, even before it blows down, you know, because if, you know, we get to ask Thanksgiving, it's really hard to get much done.
I'm gonna try to be brief, I feel like, whenever that movie is, um, when we do vote, full board to vote. I just wanna get back to how we originally went down this road, which was town meeting members for themselves or their constituency, um, speaking about, because of a financial hardship in the place where they rented, the need for, um, an expanded criteria that the select board has, or some sort of other process, which is what this pilot program is, is seeking information on. So, after November first, one of the things I'd be interested in is, I'd like to, if I have the opportunity, refocus the board back that when we look at whatever the permits that were given out, if it's for a third, fourth, fifth car, which kinda flies in the face, I think, of why we went down this road. We didn't go down this road to say, we're gonna provide an opportunity, you already have two cars, you didn't get that third car, 'cause you had, or a fourth car, or a fifth car, 'cause you had nowhere to park it, you know. I see those people participating in the pilot, and I don't think, you know, let's just move forward and go with it, God bless you, but.
Excuse me, thank you.
I think at the end of, when we come to the assessment, we need to look at how many of those permits that were taken out, were for the original intent and purpose, um, taking away net zero and transportation issues, and what we're, you know, asking people to think of how to be mobile in many different ways, and not, but then, um, I, 'cause I think, uh, there'll be a very small number. Say all two hundred go out, I think there's gonna be a lot of, um, cut two, three, four, five. And to me, I would not vote that that, you know, should continue in the future, because that's not what this is, and I think it kinda flies in the face of some of the positions that we've taken, you know, moving forward, putting climate change resiliency aside. Um, and then, you know, my thing would be, on November first, um, where I'm sitting right now is I think we should, for the financial hardship issue only, expand our criteria for people who can come in and apply to the select board for these, versus doing the honor system, because I don't think, because I've spoken to a lot of people out there, and, and I haven't gone into any discussion with them, and it has nothing to do with an election coming up or anything like that. But, um, of the people, I've only spoken to four actual who'd availed themselves of the opportunity, but it's just get another car, it's not a financial hardship, and I think, and if I'm incorrect, but I think that's what sotted us down on this road, was to, to address that inequity issue. I'd like to get back to that versus a car three, four, five. Because I can tell you, my parents, we never owned a home. And we didn't own a car, because we couldn't afford the car, the insurance, or the gas, until I was in middle school, it was junior high east back then, and even then, you know, it, it was limited, so. Um, and that's, that's the, um, constituency, I think, that we, we were trying to address with that particular need, so, um, I'll start there.
That's part of the reason we're limiting it to one hundred, because, I mean, we're going to have to assess, you know, and, and I think it's gonna fall on our office to do that.
Oh, Britain, where are you?
It's gonna fall under us to issue the permits, just for clarification.
No, no, to, to assess, to assess, I mean, the, the, the reason for, for, for taking the permit, you know, so. Unless we can find another home for the work, you know, go ahead.
Well, I think that will be, I, I think we're gonna, for the pilot, we're just gonna have them issue the permits, it doesn't have to go to the sport, right?
Right.
But I think as far as the application, we have to make sure that they put a reason.
Right, right, yes.
But then I think it would be, I think it would be our, on us to
Right, yes.
review and assess that.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, and so, so, so I'll, I'll be working with whomever, I mean, to design that form, you know, in terms of, of, of questions, you know, and, and, and I'll offer to work with the select board and staff, regardless what happens, you know, on, on the first, you know, so. Uh, alright, alright, so I think we have a way forward, and so now I just need to figure out how to write this into, so, so, and I think my writing abilities will improve. After Thursday, I mean, I have a little more free time, you know, so, okay. Well, thank you, thank you very much, folks, you know, so, uh, and we'll see if I have it back, you know, on, on, I'm gonna try and get it back on the twenty-seventh, you know, we'll have that interview, and maybe just one other thing, and maybe a few, a couple other items, but we'll, we'll focus on the main event, you know, that night, you know, so, alright, um, item eight, you know, beautification committee? Anything, Mr. Hurd?
Yeah, so we've been talking about the beautification committee for a little bit. So the beautifica, I don't have the exact dates, but this was a committee that was created, I think by Mr. Caro, I believe before I was on the board. The charge still has Board of Selectmen, so it dates itself a little bit. Um, we've had a lot of push-up in the past couple of years to get something going. I know the Chamber of Commerce has a beautification committee, this annual perennial disappointment in the Arlington holiday lights in Arlington Center, so I think that's one of the things that the beautification committee can do. We, there's a certain amount of money in the DP, in the budget already for holiday lighting that I think the beautification committee essentially can come in and create the plan for, to be implemented. And then, i- it's more than holiday lights, but I think that, that's one of the main thrusts that we're hearing from some, a lot of residents in town, as to, and the Chamber of Commerce, where we're trying to invite people to shop in Arlington Center, particularly the Heights and Eastern Arlington seem to do, do a good job, but in the center, it struggles a little bit. Um, so I do wanna put a meeting of the beautification committee in play. And the reason I, that's why I've been on my phone, is I asked Ms. Meyer to send me the charge, I didn't have it in front of me, I kept meaning to get this added to the, to the agenda, but I wanna read out the members, and then just see if any other members have any suggestions as to what could be added. And I think the members that you see here, it, there was a sort of a specific purpose of the beautification committee back then, that might not jive with what we're looking to do with it now. But currently is one member of the Board of Selectmen, change that to Select Board, or designate one member of the Veterans Council, um, one designated the Arlington Garden Club, one designated from the Chamber of Commerce, then the Economic Development Coordinator, a member from DPW, then three residents. Um, I think since then, you know, I know we have the Arlington Center Merchants Association, uh, I think that the Heights has a merchants, merchants association that I think could benefit from a representative. I was actually thinking more, more than one from the Chamber of Commerce, but I think if you have those merchants associations from the center, the Heights, I don't recall if there's still a Capitol Square.
Yeah, I don't know if they're still around either.
Association, but.
I think, I think they may have called the five.
I mean, we also have the three residents, but, I mean, that was my, and I guess, it, it doesn't hurt having in there, I don't know if based on what the beautification committee is really trying to do right now, if, you know, the Veterans Council or the Garden Club still makes sense, if it does, that's fine. Um, I don't know what the original intent of having the Garden Club's role, other than, I know, I get that the Garden Club can kinda go hand in hand with, with flower, for floral arrangements and whatnot, but I don't know, I guess I'm bringing this to the board for discussion with a little guidance, but hoping for, to see if anyone has any comments as to what others suggested designees there. Could be on the beautification committee as we start to put this together? Or just those additions of the, at least the Arlington Center and the Heights Merchants Association, with the current membership makes sense, or open to any ideas, I guess.
Just a question, this is, this is a committee of the Select Board, I assume?
Yeah, so this was created, the charge says there is hereby establish an outdoor beautification committee of the Board of Selectmen, which purposes shall be to develop a program of appropriate seasonal and patriotic displays, installations, and decorations in Arlington's public spaces primarily concentrated along the main public ways in town. Which I think that charge is fine, I think that's what we're trying to accomplish with it. Um, I think, I guess my rationale for some of the merchants associations is that the, a lot of the voices I hear are from either the Chamber of Commerce or business, the business sector that says, you know, we really would like to see the town step up their game as far as decorations and, and, I think the reason we say holiday decorations is that, you know, that's the shopping season, and trying to attract people to shop local and to come here instead of Bill, uh, Velmont, or Lexington, or our neighboring communities. So I think, to the extent we could get as many local business voices on this type of committee, it will help out, because that's really who's benefiting from it.
And it doesn't have any actual appointees now, right?
Is, we haven't populated it, it was created by the then Board of Selectmen, um, at a time uncertain. I know Joe Caro was on the board, and the, I, I don't think that we ever actually got, kicked it into motion. Which I do want to do is actually start, is populate the board and get appointees.
Mr. Hurd? Just a couple of things I'd like to mention that may be relevant to this conversation. One is that the, uh, Parking Benefits District budget includes a hundred and thirty-six thousand, four hundred and ninety-nine dollars in various improvements to the, uh, Parking Benefits District in the town center. Uh, there are seasonal plantings, there is watering for seasonal plants, seasonal decorations, which will enhance the money that's already in the DPW budget, uh, some money for trash management, um, a little bit of improvements to the visitor center, and some wayfinding signs. So, um, to the visitor center and some wayfinding signs. So I've had some conversations both with the Parking Benefits District Committee and with members of the Chamber of Commerce and Julia Myrick Keith. We have money, therefore, you know, a fairly good sum, I'd say, for focusing on that area. The other thing that we've put forward, although we need some further clarification as to what it's going to do, is we've made a recommendation to the Finance Committee that we put in $25,000 in the FY24 budget for the 250th anniversary, which it's not exactly beautification, but it will go toward generally signage or various other things that we might do around the 250th anniversary. I mentioned that both because I think it's relevant to the idea of spending and beautification, but also because I need some guidance as to how we might spend that money. We just kind of came up with a figure, but the Finance Committee is now asking me, all right, what are you going to do with it? So to the extent that any members of the board could provide that guidance or help to me at some point, that would be useful in getting it passed the Finance Committee. So just wanted to mention those things.
I saw that email. I didn't respond because I thought you know where I was going to point you to. Mr. Hurd?
Um, I'll take the last point first. And I think we, the 2025 committee's meeting every two weeks right now. So it might be helpful. I don't know if the timing lines up. I think our next meeting, it's in the next couple of weeks. It it might be less this board and more to come into that meeting and have a discussion. Or if it needs to be done quicker, I can talk to members of the board. But there are, that committee's going to explode with subcommittees and this, that and the other, and grant writing committees. And I think we'll be able to identify pretty quickly what that can be spent on. But I just, if the timing, if if it can wait till the next 2025 committee, and I'll get you the exact date, then you can come into the meeting and I think they could explain to you, give it a pretty easy explanation as to how that, how far that money can go. Then as far as funny, I mean, we had had discussions and I think I had just spoke maybe when speaking to people at the Chamber of Commerce of the idea of this beautification committee having its own budget because some committees have, like A-10 has an annual budget and we just spend, get to spend that money. Whereas at least in the near future, there's money to be, like you said, on the DPW already puts into holiday lighting in the center and we have other sources of revenue or funds that we can use for certain aspects that the beautification committee could come up with. I think in its first inception, it's more of a design committee, where the beautification committee, if there's a member of DPW that's on the beautification committee, we say, all right, you know, ahead of the holiday lighting season, we say, we come up with a plan and we talk to the DPW member and say, this is what we'd like to to put put in for our holiday lighting. And he goes back to, you know, whether it's Mike Rodemacher or someone that works under Mike Rodemacher, goes up to Mike, or however it works, says, all right, is this in the budget to implement this plan? In that way, there's voices that aren't just the DPW workers, and nothing against DPW workers. They're, they do a fine job, but they're not necessarily lighting designers. And I think where the the committee can come together is come up with plans. And this is what we'd like to see. And like at the, when we took up at the Parking Advisory Committee, we took up the Parking Benefits expenditures and Julia Myra came in with the wish lists from the Chamber of Commerce and we, she listed a number of things that the Chamber of Commerce would like to see the funds spent on and a lot of them, we're going to take care. So I think it's just another area, another committee that's just centralized on, these are the things that we need to do to make our, our business areas look better. And we'll work with the town via the designees to get a path to implement those. And I said, and you know, we'll, I'll follow up with some of the members of the Chamber of Commerce that I talked to initially, where, again, I think I misspoke as as to having specific funds that the committee is just going to write checks to to buy. But I, I don't think it's going to hinder what the beautification committee is trying to accomplish because there is fund, like the manager says, there's funds to to pay for the expenses. It's just not a separate bank account that the beautification committee maintains. And I'll explain that to them. But I, part of the reason I want to put something together is just to, for my own sake, to kickstart me to, I mean, set, set a meeting and get people to populate the board.
So, so, right now, I, the money that is spent that, I, used for lighting, who makes the decisions about how the lighting is is done? And who makes, to the extent there's a beautification decision to be made, you know, with the money that is spent, who are making those decisions?
Probably Mike Rodemacher, because the money, there's a certain amount that he has in his budget that he can go contract out to a company to come in and if you give them X number of dollars, they'll put up Y amount of lights. With the enhanced money from the Parking Benefits District, he can then go out and buy more lights. And there'll be some conversation about, all right, they're on these trees, now put them on those trees too, or.
All right. Just trying to make sure that we weren't going to have the, some other group of people who are making these decisions that this group would either have to work with or or.
Yeah, I would say if there's a beautification committee that wanted to give input into that.
Right.
I mean, ultimately, if we're putting things on town property, it's a town department has to make an ultimate decision about what that, where that goes.
Right.
But always having the input from the merchants or residents or businesses along that area would be useful.
So then on that committee, is some, is there somewhere?
There's a member of DPW on this committee. And I think I would like to get to a point where DPW is working with and respecting the designs that come, I come up from.
So, so the source of funds?
Not in all, sorry, not in every season, but certainly in, in some seasons. And to the extent we can get away from wrapping the tree chunks, which drives me bananas every year when I see it, that would, that's a major step forward.
I got you. You know, okay. So the source of funds that they are directly is coming from the Parking Benefits District. You know, you're fine, fine.
And the DPW budget.
Okay. All right. And so they'll, they'll know that, you know, they'll know that there are more other funds, you know. And so, okay, fine, fine, you know. So, so I don't have any, any, the three, the, what's, what would be the process for how the three residents were chosen?
I mean, I think you guys can vote to make me the designee or not. But I think like, in most committees, if there's resident designees who have as the select board to designate or handle anybody that's in any interests and talk to them and just make our recommendation to the board. So I get, I guess I don't want to take any members off the committee because, I mean, I understand why the Veterans Council's there and the Garden Council and it's still in the wisdom of the board to leave them on there. I guess I would just make a motion to amend the charge, just to add one member of the Arlington Center Business Association, one member of the Arlington Heights Business Association in addition to the one member of the Chamber of Commerce, and just leave it at that.
I'd second that and suggest an amendment that we also designate Mr. Hurd as the select board member. If Mr. Hurd will accept that.
I'll accept.
I'm sorry, I haven't been looking over here. You've been.
No, it's, it's got my back.
That's right. Okay, so.
Although Mr. Helmut is the resident gardener.
This is, well.
And he's also the grainer or the miller?
Well, yes. It's really more vegetables than it is beauty. So, you know. Talk to me when we have a town farm and I'll be all over it.
Okay. I mean, so on a motion, I mean, to approve the new makeup of the beautification committee with Mr. Hurd as the select board designated by Mr. Helmut and a second by Mr. Hurd.
Mr. Mahan?
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
What was your vote?
Great. So, on to the proposed updates to the select board handbook. Mr. Helmut?
Thank you. The members have had circulated to them a red line, a copy and an updated red line that I sent out individually this weekend for review but not discussion. That is, the newest red line is now, thank you to Ms. Maher, has been now been posted on in Nova's agenda for the, for the public. My suggestion would be, well, I guess the question is suggestion, if my colleagues have had time to review that, I'd suggest that we do this discussion once when we're going to vote. And so if anybody's not had a chance to review that, you know, we we could consider whether or not we want to discuss it without a vote. I will say that although we have the absence of Mr. De Corsi, he was, as our chair likes to say, my plus one on this. And and I have incorporated his suggestions and he's said to me, he would be fine if we did proceed. I have one suggested change and it's just an oversight on my part, an editing change, and that is on page 21 in the open forum.
Oh, that's exactly what you have in front of me.
Yeah. And I should say thanks to Attorney Heim for making some suggestions that I have included, incorporated, that are in his opinion and advice in conformity with the Supreme Judicial Court's recent ruling. And I think those are pretty self-evident in the red line. The, there's probably more than one correction that I didn't, I didn't miss, but the one that I didn't miss is that current, the revised item six on page 21 of the document, so numbered, is six C is now redundant. I just forgot to strike that because it got moved up to the top of number six. So this, the phrase refrain from any conduct, which essentially disrupts, et cetera, just got moved up to the head of of item six, all speakers. So that is, I would suggest if we were to vote for just editing, that we would strike that so that it doesn't appear twice.
In light of the discussion with your plus one, Mr. De Corsi, I'd like to, if we could, first have a vote on this tonight and the, and the work that Mr. Helmut has put into it. So first I'd like to, and then I have something I'd like to put on the table, maybe for a discussion when we have the full board, or maybe when we have our goals meeting, typically in the summertime. So my motion would be to receive and approve the proposed updates to the select board handbook. And then, it's funny you said, honest to goodness, at page 21 here, which triggered something with me. And then I just had a real quick question, which might fall to Attorney Heim on page 27 under licenses and permits. But when I was looking at the red line changes on page 21 that Mr. Helmut just referenced, it sort of reminded me, and I think we should either, after April 1st, the next chair at a regular scheduled board meeting or the next chair's discretion at a select board goals meeting in terms of what's missing from the select board handbook. Because when I was reading this on page 21, it sort of, not, it triggered with me, and I don't know if it's something that should be in the select board handbook, should be codified, should not, or should be codified in a different way. And I think it's something that's very, very valuable. And using what you highlighted on page 21, that Mr. Helmut and Attorney Heim made sure it's in conport with current state law, there's sort of been an unspoken tradition that the outgoing chair usually within two to four weeks has an informal cup of coffee with the incoming chair and offers whatever, you know, this worked for me, this didn't work for me. But one of the things I was thinking is, is that something that that practice should be codified? I think really very strongly that, like, I know that two, two ti, three times that I've been the outgoing chair, I've highlighted like four or five points. And I've, I've always said, your chair, she or he, because there was, it's your discretion. But like especially here on, in in order to keep the best record we can, I think one of, I know one of the things I always say, even if the person knows it, but sometimes, you know, the person, sometimes I've had incoming chairs saying, you know, I was wondering why you did that. And, oh, I didn't even notice you asked that, like name and record, name and address for the record, sort of a thing. So, and this is a conversation regardless of what comes up that the the next chair, I'll pass on to him or her, him, excuse me, not her, I'll pass on to him about how he might want to handle that. So it would be, you know, what's missing from the handbook and when should it be discussed? Regular select board meeting goes, goes in objective mission in July. And then I just had a real quick question, if I could, Mr. Chair. Sure. And I promise this will be it. That's fine. I'm just curious, on page 27, when it talks about licenses and permits, am I correct that, first tell me if it's a term I shouldn't be using anymore, but, but when we recently had discussions about busking and busking permits, does that fall under street performance, special event permit? Do we still call it busking or is that a no?
We call it street performance.
Street performance, okay. So that is included in it? Because I can see the gentleman who advocated it right here before me. That's it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just a quick response of appreciation to Ms. Mahan, having just gone through this experience of revising this, which hadn't had a substantial revision in a few years, I have a fresh appreciation for the value of of the passing of wisdom and continuity. And I think you spoke really eloquently to that, Mrs. Mahan, and I, as the keeper of a lot of that continuity, frankly, and I appreciate that. So I like the idea of considering, not tonight, just for efficiency, but, but the next time that we talk about this, whether that might be select board goal, to just, to think of this as more of a living document because it is, it's useful to the board, to new members of the board, it's useful to the public to set expectations. And, you know, having, having something there about introducing a handoff tradition and other, other kind of review, exit interviews, whatever that is, might, might actually be a really nice thing to consider adding to this.
Do you think we make it that the outgoing chair has to treat?
I think that's a really.
That's a story for another day.
Buy a coffee or a beer for the incoming chair?
Yeah. Outgoing chair just gets to pick the place, this establishment, so they should pay for it. But anyways, thank you.
I guess my only issue, you know, with open forum adjustments, I mean, is that, see, most of this is about me, what the board does, you know. And here we're talking about what residents do, and it doesn't really tell us what to do should open forum go south. You know, and so, so like, how do, how do we handle, you know, if someone is being intentionally disruptive? I don't really have a problem with people being offensive. And it's like, go at, have at it, you know, and, and.
Or even uncivil, you know. But, I mean, disruption is another kettle of fish. If we can't conduct our business, I mean, then, then, then we're, there's a problem. I mean, and so either the, that is the point, me, to disrupt. And so then how do we handle that? Me, or it's not the point, me, the person doesn't really see themselves as being disruptive. Like if someone comes in protest, me, the point is to disrupt. And if they're just being obnoxious, you know, and continually so disruptive, me, then how do we handle? So you want to answer it? Go ahead.
I do. Thank you. I thought about this. I'm, my understanding is that state law provides for that, that the chairman of a, of a meeting of any public body has, has the authority to enforce what is permissible to enforce in state law. And that includes disruptive behavior, disruption by the speakers that substantially impair the, the, the conduct of the meeting. The reason that it doesn't have a lot more detail is I didn't want to overemphasize the point. We don't really have a lot of problems and I like, and I think that's good. And, and I think there's a tone question here about suggesting that it's the free, a free for all, that it's just not. But. But given that there is a provision of state law that the chair, if necessary, can even, you know, summon the authorities so things get really out of hand, within the bounds of the new guidance from the Supreme Judicial Court. But that's the rationale for focusing on general expectations of conduct without necessarily going into explicit definitions that are contained in state law. And I would invite Attorney Heim to correct me or expand upon that if necessary.
Attorney Heim?
I wouldn't take up too much time on this, but that's correct. I think one of the things that was a little unsatisfying about the court's decision is there's a sort of qualifier at the end that says, of course, fighting words are not allowed. But what fighting words constitute in a town form of government where there's a lot of access and there's sometimes a relationship between the person who's speaking and the volunteers and electeds and things like that can be a little bit complicated. If somebody says something that's anti-Semitic, homophobic, something like that, makes the charge that someone's a Nazi who lost their family in the Holocaust, is that a fighting word? So there's some unsatisfying things about it, but the real core of it is that we know that you can't disrupt the meeting or make it impossible for the board to conduct its business. And so when someone is engaging in protest, as you're suggesting, that's kind of a different lens.
Right.
This is more about, like, resetting the fact that people are allowed to be rude and uncivil, unfortunately, and that, you know, if someone has something like that to say, even if it's borderline scandalous or inappropriate and stuff like that, as long as they're not threatening someone or cursing, you know, with an hour or something like that, we're going to basically allow them to speak. If it becomes disruptive, the board, the chair, the board has the ability to suspend, go into recess, which is actually one of the things in the facts of the case. The chair also has the ability to bang a gallon and say, you know, order, order, you know, and ask you to, you know, be quiet, your time is up, you're not recognized to speak, things like that. I think one of the things that my office has kind of played in doing is doing a training specifically for chairs of boards and bodies to help folks get a little bit more comfortable with their role. Sometimes the most effective thing to do in those situations, in this head to head, which is one more minute, is to actually address what's being said, which is, you know, you're engaging, say, a theoretic resident, you're engaging in some hyperbole where you're accusing me of misconduct or being on the take or something like that. Is that what you're saying? You're saying that I'm actually taking some sort of bribe? Because if you are saying that, you should state it for the record. If you're not saying that, you're trying to gain leverage or add to your argument by saying something that you know isn't true. So that's something that a lot of volunteers in particular aren't as comfortable with as elected officials, who are oftentimes a little bit more used to the verbal sparring that happens in a body. So my concern is less about this board and your policy in that circumstance. You also have the support of the manager, the council, your administrators, there's a lot of folks here. So I would carry with Mr. Helmut's recommendation, and I wouldn't put any more detail into this, because it's a nuanced area, there's nothing wrong with the chair of a board just trying to hit pause and asking people, you know, for some quiet for a moment so that they can recognize the next speaker or they can decide what to do. But I think trying to over legislate in your handbook would probably cause more harm than good.
All right, so, because I, my thoughts, I mean, if I got this, like, that would be, I'd be, like, look over and go, oh, in some way. If I were anticipating it, then I would have a conversation with you beforehand, like, what do I do in a situation like this, you know? And so, and because I was one of the people, you know, that did read the handbook, you know, when I was campaigning the first time, so, so, and I can't say that that really was a burning issue, you know, for me, because there was the pandemic, and it was kind of, I took the priority over everything at that time, you know, so, okay, all right. Yeah, that's, please.
And again, when we have the, when the board has the future discussion, in conversations that I've had with town council and with other council in my day job, especially when this ruling came out, which basically said, my interpretation of what has been told to me, people can be rude and uncivil, because it could be subjected open to interpretation. But what, and you can't regulate that, but what you can regulate is, someone get up, be rude, uncivil, say it. But then, once they become repetitive, it's a disruption. So you're not making a judgment call on what they're saying, or saying whether they can say that, barring the examples the town council gave in the beginning. But, and that's where, because I was really frustrated to say, I would like to think there's some sense of decorum, civility, you know, I certainly would abide by it. And I would just say, for myself, moving forward, most people that I've encountered over the years that, for whatever reason, and there is a reason, and sometimes the reason is no reason, but usually there's a reason behind it, I found for myself in moving forward, when you're talking to chairs and other chairs, is for whatever reason, that a resident, a person, someone appearing at a microphone at any board or commission meeting, kind of like let them have their say, because we have to under the law, and say it. I found, you know, not responding to it because eight times out of 10, that person, that's what they want. I have a relative, no matter what, that just loves, and I love this person dearly, but they just love to argue and should say to me, oh, that's a really nice maroon jacket you have on. And I've learned to say, I didn't even notice it, you're right, it is. Because, so, because I feel a lot, you know, a lot of times, it's just sometimes for whatever is behind it. Some people just want to be like that, kind of like let them be, and then say, okay, you've made that point twice, you're disruptive now, move on, because you kind of can't win, you know. But anyway, so, I'll leave it there. I don't know if anyone's second in my motion.
So, can I?
Second?
Thank you, sorry.
Any other questions? Comment?
Thank you all for your consideration.
Thank you for joining us.
Yeah, thanks for doing it.
Wait, was that Mr. Greeley? I'm the person who created this, so no one's thanking me. Thank you, Mr. Greeley, thank you, Mr. Greeley.
It was, I will say, it was, when I was considering running for board, I read it as well. When I was elected, I read it as well, and even though it was a little out of date, it was extremely helpful, so. It's a privilege to be able to update it.
So I'm, a motion to approve the newly edited version of the select board handbook, you know, by Ms. Mahan and a second by Mr. Hurd. Mr. Hurd?
Mr. Greeley would say, thank you for choosing on. Mr. Hurd?
I was going to be comment that I think Mr. Greeley handed this to me roughly five years ago, but I think it's been in my drawer, so. Mr. Greeley, I read the whole thing, yes.
Mr. Hurd?
Mr. Greeley, I've done my best, but you, the credit is all to you, sir, yes.
Here's how many I have. And after we take this vote, when you have time, because you don't have any other time, if the current copy with the revisions and select board handbook, if these could be taken out and the other one, the practice was, if you want to continue on this one in every drawer, well, there should be, well, maybe there should be.
Give my copy.
But at least get these ones out of here. A good Kevin story, of course, I mean, we take a picture that she has to, he went and got all these banners made, he and the town businesses donated. And I got a call from DPW guys saying, do you guys ever read these things? Is this, is this for real? And so I went down and I told them, just hang on, don't go crazy, because within the hour, you're going to get a call. And Mr. Greeley had meant to make up Board of Selectmen banners, and he did broad of selectmen. And there were three women on the board at the time.
You had it hanging in our office for some time?
So, yeah, if these could, after tonight, someone recycle these, and, you know, maybe not put new ones in there. I don't want to make, but each member of the board is supposed to have a handbook, so once it's updated, we'll do that. Thank you. Yes, Mr. Greeley.
So, yes, and with the mask on, you can't see how many times I've yawned in the last five minutes. I'm falling off a cliff again, so, fortunately. Yeah, no problem, I did pretty well today. But fortunately, unlike the last time, we only have, like, you know, the letters to go. So correspondence received?
We receive.
Second?
Yeah, and, I think we maybe want to, I think we want to direct, you know, number 11. I'll take up 11 with the town manager, you know, so, okay, great. So, so a motion to receive by Mrs. Mahan and a second by Mr. Helmut. Mr. Hurd?
Hurd?
Yes.
Helmut?
Yep.
Yes.
Yes. And so, so I guess, new business, Ms. Maher?
No new business, thank you.
Mr. Hurd? Mr. Kohler?
I'd just like to give credit to Mr. Heim for sending out notices to all of the different committees who need to appoint members of the police review committee. So that starts the 90-day clock for them to get back to us. We've already heard back from some of them, but I just wanted you to know that that process is now moving forward.
Okay, great. Mr. Hurd?
This is a silly little thing that I just thought of, but when can we transition back to voice votes? It's not like a big deal, but it's like, I mean, I know we did that because of the hybrid, but, I mean, before, people would watch us on TV, so.
Wonderful point, that's very correct, as long as all members are in attendance, you can take your votes in your normal way. It's going to be weird, but, yeah, you can go back to.
We can save at least, you know, 46 seconds of voice.
So we talk about overnight parking and beautific, no.
So you're saying, I thought, I thought because it was hybrid, we had to.
That's what I thought.
It's your participation that matters.
Oh.
It's not the members of the, of the, well, I often think, I'm sorry, Mr. Hurd, I often think about this, because to the extent that people are just viewing it and might be submitting comments, I don't think that that would constitute a hybrid under the law. To the extent that you're having hearings where, like, applicants are appearing before you, you might have to make sure, I have to look at that a little bit, because I think it's, I mean, the intent of the law is primarily so people can understand and follow what's going on. But for the select board, it's televised, everyone can kind of see your vote. None of you are appearing remotely right now. So it may be that we don't need to do anywhere, I'll double check on it.
Yeah, I mean, we obviously did it because of Zoom, but before the whole hybrid participation, if someone wanted to watch a meeting, they'd watch on TV, and it's the same situation as if they're watching.
I thought it was, if I may, Mr. Chair, if you could correct me that I'm wrong, but I thought it was if a full board is here, we can do all the favor, all opposed. If any one, some or all of us are not here and we're taking advantage of the hybrid format and we're on the screen, then we have to do it that way. So if you could find out if that's right or wrong.
I will, I will.
Thank you. Sorry, Mr. Hurd.
All right, Mr. Helmut?
No new business, thank you.
Uh-huh.
Only two, I haven't had any in a while. The first one is, if, through you, Mr. Chair, to the town manager, if either, we can know the short answer tonight or in the future, just because people are starting to ask me about the suspension of collecting for the parking meters here on Mass Ave, which the town manager and town treasurer, when it was brought to their attention, evaluated it and said they were suspending it till at least, I believe, the end of March. And a big part of the reason was because didn't have the new meters to put in and other things that need to be done. So people are asking me, is that March 31st date still set and everything's ready to go April 1st? Or is that going to be extended out, if I could?
As far as I know, it's still on schedule, the meters should be going in soon. When I meet with the acting treasurer tomorrow, I will ask him about the progress, but I've not been told that we have any delays.
Okay, so if people ask me starting April 1st, they better stop in quarters or do the pay feature? Are you going to let us know that?
Well, yeah, I mean, there will be new meters up there, so people will notice that.
Okay, so when they see new meters, you better start, okay.
Yes.
That's what they're asking.
Yeah.
And then the second one, in no way means any sarcasm, so I'll just try to make it as brief as possible. And I don't expect the town manager to know this, if you do, God bless you, but all of us know IAAF International Association of Firefighters, Ed Kelly, Rich McKinnon, da, 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 da. I know that today, because in a different conversation with one of the people I just mentioned, they spoke about, and this is not meant sarcastically, it's sincere, that the IAAF is filing against the, like, the National Fire Safety Prevention Board, that, and I think it's under their regulation 1971, because I remember 1971, that the national safety fire protection standards, which govern the equipment that, Rich McKinnon sent it to me, governed, oh, please, the bunker equipment for firefighters. The way 1971 is written, that it requires the use of PFASs, PFAS, in firefighter protective gear. And as we know, and I'm not being sarcastic, it's cancer-causing agent, and the IAAF has, and my brother-in-law is one of them, who's, he's on the video and unfortunately has a terminal illness. So that relates to me, since Ed Kelly and President Kelly and President McKinnon put this out, I'm just wondering if you could find out through Chief Kelly, if any of our firefighter, it's their protective gear, it says their bunker protective gear. If we could just double check, I know that Chief Kelly and Chief Jefferson before him, when the fire stations were done over, they got special hazardous hazmat suit washing machine and dryer, I don't mean to say it like that. I don't think this is anything we have to be concerned about, but I guess because it's a, what did he say it was? NFPA, National Fire Protection Association. That's who the IAAF is suing, that's who they're saying this protective equipment, it's mandated and PFAS is in there. If we can just double check that we don't have that in there, so we won't be joining the suit. And if we do, then I'll just leave it to the town manager and Chief Kelly on it. And I don't, I'm not saying that, it's just so happened I got it today, it's not, and that's it for new business, thank you.
Yeah, so I think the only thing is I may ask our board event to check to see, I mean, whether it's Tuesday or Wednesday would be better for that backup, that second meeting next week, if we needed.
Can we just, if we need another meeting, kick it to another meeting? Because again, we're on a rush.
So kick it to the third?
Yeah, move it to, if we need more time, just go to the next scheduled meeting.
What was that for, I'm sorry?
It would be for the, once we do the town manager interview, if we need more time to make a decision whether we would do it, you know.
27th or the third, or 27th and the third?
Or would we do another meeting next week? So you're saying that, do not schedule another meeting next week?
I mean, I just don't think that we have a major time crunch, so with that, just keep, I mean, everyone's going to come in, we have a meeting, so the more, you know, that's community and whatnot, so I would say, let's.
There is the possibility that the board will be different on the third versus what it is on 27th?
Yeah, I mean, I'm not saying that, but I mean, when we come in, town staff and ECMI have to get to, keep it up. So we add another meeting versus just having it during our normal, normally scheduled meetings, then it saves a lot of.
Yeah, I think that's a really good point, given our hybrid requirements and ECMI and everything, that. But I think maybe a remedy for the potential change of the board would be to, if we find ourselves in those circumstances, we could decide to take the final vote after the election.
Then we want to just schedule another meeting, yeah, takes care of that. All right, so easy enough, and so on that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Okay.
And so a motion to adjourn by Mrs. Mahan and a second by Mr. Hurd. Mr. Hurd?
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Helmut?
Yes.
Mahan?
Yes.
Diggs?
Yes.
They're going to miss the way, say that, say it, they're going to miss the way.